Now called to order the September 1st, 2022 Board of Education meeting. We acknowledge, I'm taking it this evening, we acknowledge the traditional ancestral unceded territory of the Chumaz Tongva Fernandino Tatia Do Tati Viam and First Nations on which we are learning, educating, and living. Tonight, we will have Shoshana Ter Petrosian, almost, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Shoshana was our past student board rep from Burbank High School.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ramirez-Adams, would you please take the roll call?
Member Frittner?
Present.
Member Aga Khanian?
Present.
Clerk Weisberg?
Present.
Vice President Ferguson?
Present.
President Tabit?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six, excuse me, five reporting on closed session. It was for informational purposes only, no action items were taken during closed session. Adjustments to the agenda?
President Tabit.
Mr. Ferguson?
I will move that we consolidate items 15A, 15B, and 15C, which is the last period of public comment, with items 11A, 11B, and 11C, which is the first period of public communication. So one period of public communication for five minutes.
Second.
On any items related to business pertaining to the school district.
And putting in a colored card, or a card.
Yeah, second.
Awesome. Thank you for the motion and the second. Any discussion? Okay, on the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we will hear all public speakers at the beginning of the meeting. Items for future agendas.
President Tavik, if we could move comments up so we can introduce a new principal?
Sure. And then, do you want us to go backwards?
Then we'll go to the normal public.
Okay.
If I could have Dr. Knappick come to the podium to introduce the new principal at Walt Disney Elementary.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, Board Member Superintendent Hill, Senior Leadership and the Burbank School community, and especially the Disney School community. This evening, it's my pleasure to go ahead and announce our newest principal joining our team. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and invite Ms. Rebecca Roundtree Harris to the podium with me as I introduce her. Ms. Harris?
The Burbank Unified School District is proud to announce the selection of our new principal at Walt Disney Elementary School, Ms. Rebecca Roundtree Harris. Ms. Harris has served in public education in the Los Angeles area for more than 20 years. She became, sorry, she began as a classroom teacher in 2001 with a bachelor's degree in African-American Studies and Spanish, and a master's degree in African-American Studies. Upon completion of graduate school, she joined Teach for America and completed her multiple-subject CLEAR credential and CLAD certification. She taught 4th and 5th grade, just like me, until 2015, and then became a district-level curriculum specialist with a particular focus on English language arts. Throughout the years, she has provided extensive professional development to teachers in a variety of areas, including classroom management, reading and writing instruction, arts education, and supporting English language learners. Ms. Harris served as an assistant principal for one year and then became the principal of an elementary dual-language immersion school. She has served in that role since 2018. She has begun her work on her doctorate in educational leadership at the University of Southern California. Fight on. And she grew up as the youngest of 12 children in Iowa and is a Burbank resident. So please join me in welcoming and congratulating Rebecca as the new principal at Walt Disney Elementary School.
Good evening. Buenas noches. I'm so happy to be here and thankful to be here with you all. Thank you so much for having me. It is an honor to be here in Burbank. I have a couple of notes that I would like to share. First of all, just that it is an honor to be here. I was really excited when I learned about this opening because I feel like my values as an educator and honestly, as a human being, are really well-aligned with what Burbank Unified seems to be all about. I really have a strong belief in teaching the whole child, educating the whole child, maintaining high expectations for both our teachers and the children, finding that providing that social-emotional learning that they need. I'm a big lover of the arts. I was a dancer and theater and music background myself, valuing diversity in all areas. And of course, I love the language of Spanish because I grew up learning it and had the opportunity to study abroad and strengthen it over the years. And having been at a dual-immersion school over the last few years, it's just increased my love for building and nurturing bilingual children to grow up to do whatever they want in their future. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you, and welcome to Burbank. Well, you've been a resident, I've heard.
Yes.
So I, welcome you to Walt Disney and Burbank Unified since you've already been a resident. And, oh my gosh, everything we just heard hit so many wonderful marks that you're like perfect for Walt Disney. So I hope it's a wonderful, wonderful experience for you, and we see lots of you. So, my colleagues wish to say anything, please feel free.
Welcome. Thank you. And I hope that you'll look at us as assets and resources, and I look forward to getting to know you and also seeing the new campus, which I haven't seen yet. So all this new exciting stuff at Disney, so welcome, and we look forward to hearing what all the wonderful things that you'll accomplish.
Disney is an amazing campus community, and it sounds like we found a very good pick. So, and really looking forward to your tenure there, and, you know, just welcome, welcome to this part of the family. So you're a neighbor, but now you're entrusted with one of our amazing institutions, and I can tell you as a fellow neighbor, there's nothing better than it. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
Buenos noches, señora.
Buenos noches.
I just want to welcome you, and I love the energy, and I know that Disney, it's going to be wonderful. I just want to let you know that we're also here for you. If you ever need us, you know where to find us, and I'm looking forward to coming to your office soon and talking to you.
Good. Thank you.
So thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
Well, my colleagues have pretty much said it all, but the resume sounds fantastic, and as was mentioned, you sound like just a perfect fit for Disney, and we are glad to have you and welcome. And yes, I hope to stop by the campus and see you soon.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And we have one more new administrator. If I could have Dr. Paramo introduce the new assistant principal at John Burrows High School.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, district staff, and members of the audience. I have been trying to make this introduction for a couple of weeks now. We finally get to do it, and I'm very excited. We have a new principal, assistant principal at John Burrows High School, Alex Potapinko, and I'm going to invite him to come up right now. Alex? Alex, a Cleveland, Ohio native, has been in Los Angeles for over 10 years. While living in LA, Alex worked as a high school science teacher at Jordan High School in Long Beach, and Ula Girls' High School in Los Angeles. His administrative career began five years ago when he joined the Harkam Hillel Hebrew Academy in Beverly Hills to lead their STEAM program, or STEM program. However, Alex's journey as an educator started long before he was born. He comes from a long line of educators, his biggest inspiration being his mother. Alex's mother has taught special education for 44 years and is still going. And she's instilled in him a passion for helping students regardless of the obstacles they may face. While attending high school, Alex was a varsity athlete, lettering and volleyball, and diving. He was involved in the arts programs, including marching band, orchestra, and being a show choir member. Alex was also a fellow thespian and is eager to see the productions John Burrows High School will be putting on this year. Alex's journey in education continued through college, where he majored in biology and minored in education at Wittenberg University in Springfield, Ohio. In January, Alex completed his master's in education specializing in school leadership from Capella University. Alex has an empathetic and caring approach to working with students and teachers. Alex's extensive teaching experience and trainings in classroom management, such as responsive classroom and restorative justice, have equipped him with the strategies and tools to help support and lead a thriving learning environment for all students. In his most recent role as the director of middle school, Alex worked closely with the school's support team to ensure all students' needs were met. As a lifelong learner, Alex is excited to be part of a diverse and inclusive school and community that focuses on academic excellence and creating a positive learning environment. Alex's experience in using data to drive decisions, selecting and implementing research-based curriculums, and creating a positive school culture has prepared him to continue John Burrows' mission of promoting a learner-centered environment where every student can succeed. It's my honor to introduce Alex.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. I really, I can't thank the board enough and all the administration that saw that I'd be a great fit for the district. The first thing I want to address is what I consider an elephant in the room, and that's my outfit. I'm going to give a little anecdotal story of why I think it's important to address this is because, you know, in education, it's really important to have consistency and reliability and a routine. And my routine was uprooted yesterday when I was planning on taking my car to have it serviced this morning, and I was going to switch with my brother, and right after work, I was going to drop it off. And then John texted me that, "Are you going to come to the board meeting tomorrow?" So normally, I like have my clothes in the car, ready to go. So this morning, I still did that, but I did it at my brother's car. Everything still was going great, and then my brother went and we switched the cars, and then he left with my clothes in the car. So, you know, that kind of comes back to talking about, you know, when things are consistent and reliable. And actually, another piece of that reliability is that in my coat pocket was my speech that I was going to talk about. So there went that. So thankfully, a student actually interviewed me last week, so I'm kind of copying what she talked to me about. So I have a little bit of it, definitely talks about that. But as John had said, that, you know, really, my biggest inspiration has been my mother. She has been in special education for 44 years, in the same school, same classroom for 44 years. She's really going for that 100% pension. So she has two more years left, so she's almost there. And, you know, I think that I really became an educator because I think that was kind of what was expected of me, but I have stayed an educator because of the change that I saw that I was and am destined to make, an education. So as you mentioned, you know, I have a degree in biology, and education is my background, and I've been working as the middle school director for the past year, where we really focused on positive discipline. And that's really my perspective of coming into this, is really approaching this with an empathetic and understanding approach. Just as I go back to talking about consistency, reliability, and accountability, a lot of times, people in my position don't realize that we are dealing with children, and that consistency and reliability is extremely crucial to the success of those students. And I, as an adult, can reflect on that and utilize that to really approach in this role, as the student services the assistant principal of that. And I think that's extremely crucial of that. You know, one of my passions is always creating positive and successful relationships with students, and I believe that someone in my role needs to be able to create those positive and successful relationships in order to promote a positive school culture. And I also like to talk about that, one of the negatives about being a teacher is that you have to be okay with delayed gratification. And I think that as a teacher, you have to be okay with not knowing what the end product is going to look like. And I think that's also the beauty of it, as well, is that we have the ability to change so many lives, and I don't know too many other careers that can do that. So again, that's why I am an educator. I think that, and I just leave you with what my goals are really for this year, is that I really want to promote a safe and inclusive learning environment where all students can be successful, and I'm really thankful that I'm here and really excited to be a part of the district. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alex, and welcome. And by the sound of it, it seems like you're going to be a great fit for our district. So welcome, and yeah, please reach out anytime you need anything. And all of us stop by the high schools or attend, you know, different activities there, be it the choir performances or sporting events. So you will see us, and we'll see you, and I'm looking forward to it. So, my colleagues? Better.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I work with Harkam Hillel and Ula quite a bit when I was facing history. I know it's weird, because it's like, who's worked with Ula and Harkam Hillel? But welcome. It's so exciting to have two new members of our admin team with so much enthusiasm as a fellow theater nerd. I salute you. But like I said, to our fabulous new principal at Disney, I hope you'll look to the board as partners and an asset, and that we can support you, because transitions are always challenging. But you're in a fantastic place with a fantastic team and wonderful students, and so I just look forward to seeing you mesh into that new family at Burrows.
Thank you.
Welcome. Sorry about the mix-up on the shirt. Having said that, looking forward to suits and things like that in the future, having said that. Welcome. And I love the energy, appreciate the energy, and really am excited to see, you know, what two generations of influence look like and how you make it your own. So looking forward to your service, and it's a wonderful school that you're at. All of our schools are great, but in particular, you know, our high school students are going through some of the most challenging times. And as upbeat as it is, it's heavy as heck, too. And so people who get that, I think, will be successful, and those who are overwhelmed by that will very quickly be overwhelmed in this moment in history. But it sounds like you have an eye on it. So I really appreciate it, and good luck with your first year.
Thank you.
We're happy to have you here.
Thank you.
Finally, that's great. As my colleagues mentioned, your energy, your enthusiasm, I love your description of what you would like to accomplish and your background, and clearly, you also are very adaptable, which is a good thing to be when you're dealing with high school students. So, and your shirt is probably, based on the weather we've been having, the one that's most appropriate here tonight, so I wouldn't be.
It's actually why I'm wearing that today, is because it was so hot yesterday. I was like, I can't go through AD and lunch with my full suit on again, so that's why I was wearing it today.
Good move, so. But undoubtedly, hopefully, we'll see you soon at JBHS, and welcome.
Thank you.
So Alex, I love your story. You know, people sometimes ask me why I ran for a school board, you know, just like you and my mother, who was a teacher, taught theater, actually. And I was a part of the reason I got involved early in theater as well. So thank you for sharing that. It's always good to know that you have that person that you can always look up to, but also go for, go to for advice, which always helps. Second word I heard that really made me happy was that you're a data person. I'm a data person. I love the letter P, probability, you know? So I look forward to working with you, and yeah, I'm jealous what you're wearing, because this is what I've been wearing all day. So thank you, and welcome to Burbank and Burrows High School.
Thank you.
And we'll be seeing you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Matt? Dr. Hill? Okay. Items, we're still on items for future agendas. Anyone? I would like to bring up the discussion just for the, our policy on school overnight trips and the outdoor science school specifically, just so that the board can have a discussion on it, so that if our thoughts and policies are going to stay the same, that the public is aware of our thoughts and feelings and why those things are taking place, so.
Can, yes? Can we, can we ensure that also includes, you know, vaccination requirements for chaperones, things like that as part of that discussion?
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Future agenda item. I like us to, I like us to visit the whole blue and white card thing, if we can try to come back and see maybe we can combine it all into one public comment, instead of doing the blue and the white card. I'm just.
I think, okay, although I, did you have anyone to say? I just think, I just think that as we go through each meeting and we see that there's only one white card or one blue card that we could adjust, but if you want to discuss it, that's fine. You certainly have the right.
If I can introduce at least a concept that during our organizational meeting each year, we discuss how we want to move about public comment. Also, you know, for nights where we're not impacted, obviously, we can consolidate, but for nights where we are impacted, it does allow us to move those who are speaking on agenda items up further. So happy to discuss, but if we could wait till December potentially to have that conversation in depth?
I can wait till December.
Okay.
Going back to my request for the agenda item, could we have it in either the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, since it's a timely and relative listen? We're all good with that. Thank you so much. Okay. Moving on to a very exciting part, 8A, the oath of office, the administration of the oath of office for student board members. Burbank Unified Board of Education is one of the few boards in the state that has student board members. And so we're always very excited when our student board members get to join us. I think it's a very special thing that we offer that really shows what we're about in Burbank. We are student-centered, student-focused, and so it's important to have student board members, in my opinion. I'm sure my colleagues would agree, and offer much better examples of that, but that's, those are my, those are my thoughts. So if our two new student board members would meet us from Burbank and Burrows, meet me down in the front. We will administer the oath of office. Do you want to take a minute and introduce yourselves real quick?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, here, actually. I thought for a second they could introduce themselves and tell us who they are and their name and what high school they're from, and then we're going to see you every meeting, so.
Hi, my name is Sedine Ter Petrosian. Sorry, my voice is a little gone, but I promise I'm fine. I'm from Burbank High School. I'm the ASP president there. I'm honored to be a part of the board. You might recognize my last name or name from siblings who have done this before. I'm really excited to be here. I have a real passion for school and like student concerns, so I'm really excited to be able to come and voice that and share with you guys what Burbank High has been up to, and I can't wait for the rest of the year.
Good evening, school board. As many of you may know me, I love coming to school board meetings. Now I'm part of the board, and I have the great honor. My name is Eber Huerta. You may recognize my last name because of a school name that happened recently, which I'm proud to brag about having the same last name. I'm ASP president at John Burrows High School. As Serene spoke, I'm honestly fabregasted that I'm here tonight. I have, I'm thankful to all the students that elected me to be their president. I never thought I'd be here. I'll go more in-depth about myself at my school board report, but just to be quick and short, I'm here as well to voice the concerns of my students, to share the exciting stuff that's happening here at Burrows. I just, I can't wait to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Appreciate it. Okay. The oath of office. So you will say your name. I do solemnly swear, we can repeat it, raise your right hand, sorry. I.
Aye, Eber Huerta.
Aye, Serene Ter Petrosian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will, that I will and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Subscribed and sworn to before me this first day of September 2022. You are sworn in. Thank you. Congratulations.
And I just want to make a note that Monterey High School is in the process of selecting their student board members, so they will be sworn in at a future meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for sharing that with us. So now we move right to nine reports from the board. Serene from Burbank High School, we're going to have you go first.
Good evening, Board President Tabit, distinguished board members, Superintendent Dr. Hill, and the Burbank community. My name, as I said, is Serene Ter Petrosian, and I'm a senior at Burbank High, and I, as well as ASP president, and I'm honored to be here and to be representing Burbank High for the board tonight. So to start off the school year, ASP met in the summer to prepare by making posters and to collaborate on different ideas to ensure that the school year would start off right. With the beginning of the school year, as many know, it comes with the beginning of fundraising. ASP sold our ASP cards in our student store for $45 each, and with the purchase of an ASP card, students got a multitude of discounts on different merchandise and yearbooks. They also get to enter a multitude of sports games for free. Your book. to enter multitude of sports games for free. Yearbooks for the school year were also sold and are still currently being sold alongside our ASP cards in the student store. This school year at Burbank High, there have been a lot of changes. We introduced some new faces, specifically in our admin team, Julie Marcusson, who is here, is our lovely new principal. We also introduced Robert Mohammed, who joined our admin team as a new assistant principal of student services. Another change that we've had this year is a completely new bell schedule. This is quite different for Burbank High. So now Burbank High has three different bell schedules during one week. So on Mondays, we have our typical early release schedule. And on Tuesdays and Thursdays, every student's third period class is much longer than the other periods, which allows for teachers to have time to play our form of announcements called BHTV, so that all students can stay up to date on activities and events. And lastly, on Wednesdays and Fridays, our bell schedule follows a simple routine where every period is approximately 58 minutes long. Another change in the bell schedule is the discontinuation of the minute bell, which a couple of students haven't been happy about, but it's much more effective to help our students get to class on time. Also, to continue, this year, our SRO Officer Rodriguez is back on campus, and there's been an overwhelming amount of positive feedback from students who expressed that they are very glad that he is back. During the first week of school, ASP held activities during lunch in the quad to increase spirit and promote PHS pride. Those activities included a guess that lyric challenge and a water balloon toss. Even though the school year has just started, our sports are in full swing with already having two football games since school started. Each game has had a theme. Our previous themes were blackout and Burbank pride. And ASP is planning on incorporating many more themes onto the future football games, as students extremely enjoy dressing up and participating. Adding on, today Burbank High hosted its first blood drive of the year with UCLA. There was amazing turnout with over 118 students signing up. Burbank High's unleashed and advanced teams are also currently, right now, next to AMC, hosting their AMC night until 8:00 PM, where they're holding performances outside of AMC. Tomorrow at 6:00 AM is our senior sunrise for all our seniors. Our seniors are invited to come out to our football field at 6:00 AM to watch the sunrise before class starts. Next week, our ASP is hosting its first official spirit week of the year. Tuesday is Adam Sandler Day for us, where students get to mimic an iconic Adam Sandler outfit. Wednesday is Rock Your Crocs Day, where students wear crocs or comfortable shoes to school, such as slippers or sandals. Thursday is Throwback Thursday, where students are encouraged to dress like the 70s. And since National Suicide Awareness Week is also next week, we are dedicating Friday as a mental health awareness day, where students are encouraged to either wear purple or blue to support. Next Friday is also Club Rush, so at lunch, students can come out to the quad to see all the multitude of clubs we have to offer and can choose which ones they're interested in and which ones they want to join. Also, that night on the same day next Friday is our football senior night, and it's on Memorial Field, and the theme is red, white, and blue in remembrance of September 11. Also, all throughout next week, there will also be different activities every day in the quad to honor, in honor of National Suicide Awareness Week. On Tuesday, ASP will be selling ribbons. On Wednesday and Thursday, there will be poster signing, and on Friday, there will be bracelet making. In upcoming events, ASP will be having a foam party this year. So the foam party is planned to occur on September 23. There will be a special shirt required to get in. These shirts will be given out for free to students with an ASP card. But sadly, only PHS students are allowed this year due to safety factors. Overall, our students are settling in quite well, and I can't wait for what this amazing year holds. Any questions?
Anyone? Yes.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
You represent an amazing school. And I am, and I say this every year, but I'm a proud former student board member from Burbank High, and I want to acknowledge the history that you and your family have made now as tic-tac-toe, three in a row, basically, somewhat, but three different generations of student board members in your family. So thank you for your service to the district, to the students of Burbank High School. And I understand some folks are involved at GCC as well and all sorts of things. So the legacy of service continues. And it's so good to see our former student board member, but I'm really excited to see all that you have to offer. And you're already a class act and making jokes, and it's all great. So really looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Most importantly, I want to know what Adam Sandler character you're going to dress up as. This is like very important to me.
This is a really good question.
You could report back at the next meeting, too. I don't want to put
I mean, I have it planned out.
What is it?
So I'm going to go on Pinterest and find an exact replica photo and mimic it exactly.
Of?
So probably like really long, like shorts.
That's
I have really long t-shirts.
Perfect.
And I have a Burbank High one, so I'll probably wear that.
Perfect.
And wear some sandals and
Look like him every day of the week.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
That's the most important thing, obviously. Additionally, I also wanted to welcome you and say, I mean, I'll say the same thing to Mr. Huerta when he comes up, but that I hope you'll also come to us with concerns and questions. It's fantastic to hear about all the, I don't know how you have time to do anything other than ASP, but I hope you'll come to us with things you want us to think about. We don't want to just hear all the amazing things. We do, of course, but also we're here to serve you. So I hope you feel comfortable coming to us with, with issues that are frustrating or confusing, or you want to engage more with all of us. So I just want to let you know that we welcome that as well and welcome you. It was great to have your sister, and it was wonderful to have you. And I look forward to many more reports from BHS.
Thank you so much.
I just, I just wanted to say one thing. Your principal looked a little nervous when you mentioned the foam party. It's going to be great. It's going to be fine. It looks crazy, but it's the best thing. The kids love it. And I'm so glad you've brought it back. Oh, where do you see pictures, Dr. Weisberg?
Didn't mention, but I found out we're one of like, probably one of three schools in Southern California that do it. And our ASP advisor, Mr. Wells, had to actually drive like two hours away to a different school to teach them how to run it, because we're one of the only schools that know how to
Oh, my gosh. It's a big night. It's, it's
It's a big deal for Burbank High.
It is. So congratulations on getting that back. Thank you for supporting the kids in that. And have a good but very safe time.
Madam President, yes. Um. Mr. Petrosian, congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm going to start calling you the Burbank High School Kennedys or something, you know, but, but I also want to thank your parents, because people, you know, forget that you spend a lot of time here. And I want to thank your mom and dad for, you know, supporting you. We side with your brother, your sister, and now you. So thank you very much, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, welcome to the board. We're happy to have you here. Great first report. So much for just the first couple of weeks of school, and that's fantastic. You've got a great legacy in front of you, you know, from your siblings, but I have no doubt you will not only fulfill their, you know, what they've done, but leave your individual mark here as well. So we look forward to having you with us on the board all year and, and look forward to your reports.
Thank you so much.
And now, Mr. Eber Huerta from John Burrows High School, you are up next.
Good evening, President Tabet, Vice President Ferguson, and distinguished school board members, Superintendent Dr. Matt Hill, and amazing district staff. Firstly, I would like to do a more in-depth introduction of myself. My name is Eber Huerta, and I currently am a senior at John Burrows High School, and I serve as the ASP president. Firstly, I would like to give a big thanks to all the students of John Burrows High School for giving me this amazing opportunity to serve as their ASP president this year. I would also like to give a little background and introduction of myself. I'm born and raised here in Burbank. I attended Walt Disney Elementary, then Jordan Middle School, which now is Dolores Huerta Middle School, which I will brag about the last name until the day I die. And now I'm here at the amazing John Burrows High School. Go Bears! I speak Spanish, and I am currently taking ASL. Spanish is my first language, so I'm just firstly about the new principal at Walt Disney. I am amazed and I am so excited, especially myself, as I, I used to be an ELD kid, and now here I am. And I'm proud to brag about that and to anybody who's watching who currently doesn't speak English and is learning, you got this. I'd also like to give a big shout out to my family. I have four siblings who are currently attending BUSD and attended BUSD. I'd also like to give a big shout out to both my parents who emigrated from Mexico, who have shown me the values of hard work and have established this trust in that I am here now. Now, going into our fantastic report at Burrows. So over the summer, ASP had planned out amazing activities for our ASP. We had our ASP retreat, where all the new ASP members came around and get to know each other. We also have started on working on fundraising. We did have a BOBS fundraiser, which was amazing to see all of you and some of you there. We have as well started with our ASP cards, which are selling 45, and as well have discounts on school merchandise, free entrance to all the home games for basketball and football, and just so many, so many things. So if you go to Burrows and you're watching, make sure to buy your ASP card. Then, moving on into the first month, a busy month for us. We had picture day this week, Monday and Tuesday, not to brag, but my picture turned out really good. And now we also worked on welcoming on the first day of school, all our new bears and former bears that are coming. Our ASP was out in the entrance greeting everybody and helping everybody however we could, guiding them to their classes, or just helping to answer their general questions. A fun tradition that we have at Burrows is now with the mascot change, we have little bear paws, and each bear paw has the name of every student that is attending Burrows, and we put them around campus and like a little scavenger hunt. I found mine pretty easily, so my ASP didn't give me too much of a challenge. So that was also exciting. Sorry, I'm like reading on my phone because my printer loves giving me problems when I need to print stuff. So if I lose track, it's because my phone and I'm not used to that. Also, we are having our first blood drive of the year, which our sign up started August 29, and which our blood drive will take on place September 23. We are excited to work again with UCLA, as they have shown amazing partnership, and we can't wait for another amazing, successful blood drive. This, we are also excited, next week, we are having our club rush. It was supposed to be today and tomorrow, but myself and my executive cabinet decided that it was best to reschedule, just due to the heat advisory and the air quality. We always want to make sure that our students have the best conditions, or their safety is always put first. So we decided to postpone and move it to next week. Now, moving on to our amazing senior news. Our senior sweatshirt design contest has commenced today, commenced next week on Monday, and the last week will be on Friday to submit. All the seniors will be able to vote on the design. So we're excited to see all the designs that are going to be coming in. Our senior sunrise will also be September 9 at 6:00 AM at Memorial Field. And then our annual talent show hosted by our amazing sophomore class will be September 23. The theme will be 70s, so I hope to see some of you there and your 70s swag. This will be open to attend to all Borough students, so we can't wait to see all the amazing talent. I'm honestly waiting for the amazing guitar players that we have at Burrows, because they always astonish me and blow me away. I would also like to recognize an amazing group on campus, our Link Crew, who have hosted their freshman orientation, which took place August 4 and August 5, where each day they hosted around 300 freshmen each day, where they held fun activities. They also had Costco pizza, which personally I'm jealous that I didn't get a slice. But our Link Crew leaders act as mentors to our freshmen. Our Link Crew is made up of seniors and juniors, so they have a idea of how it's going. So each Link Crew leader, two Link Crews are paired up with a group of freshmen, and they are there to help with however they can. I personally have stolen some of my friends' freshmen, because I am not a Link Crew leader, but I am here to help however I can to them. They all, our Link Crew leaders have also helped throughout their high school experience. They meet during our APE period, which is our Academic Excellence, where students have the time to work during schoolwork, homework, or anything that they'd like to get done. Our Link Crew leaders meet with them every Thursday and deliver lessons on how to work together and get familiar and get to know more of their freshman members of their grades. I would also like to report on our sports. Last week, Burrows took the win against Fillmore. Tomorrow, we were supposed to have our second game, but due to the heat advisory, again, we decided to postpone that and said that it was best that we just move on and look for the safety of our students. Now, I would also like something new that I'm bringing this year is student concerns to the board. I think it's important that we have us as an ASP and advocacy for the student groups, and myself as an ASP president, that is something that I really want to work towards. So I do have some student concerns. One, on our water fountains, we do have some of our water fountains that are the color orange and green. Many students have been freaked out by that, and they say it's forbidden Gatorade. So I just suggest them to stay away from that and just bring their own bottled waters. And then second, some of our classrooms, such as our woodshop, don't have AC in them, and especially in this heat wave, it is definitely not the best place you want to be. As well, we have a concern brought to our new ASP advisor, who I'd like to shout out, Ms. Caitlin Morielli, who is taking in position of one of my favorite teachers, Ms. Jessica Pulaski, who was on maternity leave. She had her baby, so he's adorable. But she was the dance coach team, she was a team, she was the coach for the dance team, and she brought to me that the dance room AC has been broken for a while now, and that they would like to see how they could get that fixed, especially since right now, we are all experiencing this terrible heat wave, just to make sure that students are safe. I know our woodshop students have been moved to different classrooms because of the heat, so they are not suffering of any heat exhaustion or suffer any heat strokes, so they are in different classrooms. And that will be all for my school board report. I can't wait to work with all of you for this exciting year. I can take questions now if you have any questions.
Anyone?
Welcome. So proud and excited to see you. Thank you so much for this update. And for both of our student board members, you also don't have to wait until board meetings to let Dr. Hill or any of us know if there's a concern, especially with something like, for example, the AC. If there's a facilities issue and you hear about it, let us know right away. Let Dr. Hill know, anybody, right away, so that we can deal with that. And you don't have to wait, you know, one week or two weeks. That's really important to us. But I really appreciate that you found this important mix of concerns and also celebratory moments. It's going to be a really wonderful year, learning about both Burrows and Burbank High and Monterey from whoever their representative is. But I'm just really happy that you're here, really proud that you're here, and really excited that you're here.
Thank you. So what, first of all, you are a known quantity a bit at these meetings. So what is kind of fantastic about this is kind of, you're going to have a very similar experience, I think, to many of us. Many of us started as advocates for different programs, different things, different constituency groups, you name it. And so now, you're coming to the other side of this bar and to this dais. And now you go from just pointing out things to being responsible for them. And for understanding how and what it takes to get things done, you name it. So it's a really fulfilling experience as an activist to be able to come to this side of the bar and to come to this side of the dais. And I have seen your values, and I have seen your passion be demonstrated. So to see that operationalized in a way that serves others is just going to be truly something, I think, that will be a privilege to witness. So looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Huerta, I love your story. And I love how we can connect through our stories. As a former ELD student, I can tell you that I'm very proud to see individuals like you who've overcome all the difficulties when it comes to the language. And also the fact that you remember your parents, that is very important, to remind people that some of us, their parents made sacrifice to leave everything behind, so we can live a better life here. So I appreciate what you just said. But also, again, I'm very happy that to see both you and Serene, individuals that we've known and continue working with. So I'm very excited, because I know that you've already done so much, and only good things are coming. So I'm very happy for your team, and for not only Burrows High School, but also Burbank as a district. Congratulations, and go Bears!
Thank you.
Thanks. Welcome, Mr. Huerta. It's, you may have been surprised that the student body voted you as president, but it doesn't surprise me at all, nor any of us. You've already been, as Mr. Ferguson pointed out, you've been here before. This is nothing new, that you've, you know, been advocating on behalf of the students there. And we've all got to know you through many of your other volunteer activities as well, and seeing you around, you know, at different things around town. So we know how much you care and how hard you work at, you know, in this instance, representing the student body at Burrows. And that's great. And we will look forward to working with you and continuing that throughout the year. And happy to have you as a student board member. Thanks.
Thank you.
I, for one, am very excited to have you.
I, for one, am very excited to have you and to get to know you better, and to hear about all the exciting things that are going on at Burrows as well. Just, I know people will ask you things, or take this to the board, and it's nice to have some kind of answer or some kind of response. And so, as Dr. Weisberg says, make sure that those requests are getting to Dr. Hill or to somebody at that level, so that they can help you get through those. But also know that we've been having a lot of issues with air conditioning this week, and Facilities is working really hard above and beyond to get those things, air conditioning especially, is a top priority. So hopefully, they'll see a change sooner rather than later. The woodshop, we could probably get some fans in there if they need to be in there, but in the meantime, were you going to say that? In the meantime, hopefully, we'll find a way to get that air conditioned. It'll take some time.
And just a quick update, because I know Dr. Chambers emailed Ms. Kukta and I about the water fountains. The Facilities team is doing a review of every single one. And there's also a new grant that we're investigating through Burbank Water and Power, that we get the bottle filling stations. So we're looking at that for our secondary schools. And then, I believe there should be fans in the dance room. I was at Facilities yesterday checking with Mr. Ogawa, and he said that they're working on the woodshop. I mean, there's just not a lot of, we don't, the way it's designed, that's the challenge. So they are looking at one of those jumbo fans for that as well. But we'll make sure there's an update. But as the board member said, anytime, you can email us, and we will follow up.
If the board could get a notification when those problems are resolved, also, if we can look at those classrooms where we intend to use fans, to ensure that if there are students with auditory processing disorders, that we're not subjecting them to a classroom where they're unable to learn. Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, guys, again. Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on to number 10, presentations and recognitions. Tonight, we have the Burbank High School Speech and Debate Team, who are national champions. So honored to have them here, Dr. Paramo.
So it's a great night to be a Bulldog, particularly if you are one of the champions of the Speech and Debate Team. It is my honor and privilege to introduce the leader of the Bulldog Nation, our proud principal, Julie Markison.
Thank you so much. It is my pleasure to introduce our Burbank High School's impressive and award-winning Speech and Debate Team. They are led by their very skilled and generous coach, Brandon Batham, who I just met a little bit ago. And so I'm really excited that he is here with our team tonight. He's providing our students with opportunities and tools that will benefit them for a lifetime. And he is so generous, because he is a 100% volunteer coach. So we are very, very lucky to have him at Burbank High School, and I look forward to celebrating many future accomplishments with him and the team. So I'd like you to please help me welcome Brandon Batham and the BHS Speech and Debate Team.
Yeah, let's get the, where is it? Yeah, put it smack dab, right? President Tabit, Vice President Ferguson, members of the board, Dr. Hill. I am a proud product of Burbank Schools, very lucky to live in the house that I grew up in here in Burbank. I am incredibly proud of the work that these students have done. There's, this activity has one of the most significant impacts on students long-term, demonstrable, talk about data. When college admissions counselors look at applications, and they see something, an extracurricular activity like speech and debate, they understand the level of determination that it takes. And beyond that, to have what I believe to be Burbank High School's first-ever national champion is a big deal. Sung Ju here, I should actually introduce all five of the students here. We have Sung Ju Yun, who is now a senior. We have Alexis Bell, who is now a junior. Delia Sawatsky, who is, I always butcher some of the last names, but is a sophomore. And Mahika Chechi here, who is also a senior. And another officer who couldn't be here tonight, Casey Feifield.
Feifield?
Again, last names. To paint a picture of what this team has accomplished just in the last year. Delia, in her first-ever appearance at the state tournament, did exceptionally well, is the only student at Burbank High School to double-qualify to the state championship tournament in an event known as extemporaneous speaking, where she's given her topic 30 minutes prior to the speech, and gives a seven-minute speech on, in her case, international and national current event issues. As a freshman, phenomenal. Alexis, as a sophomore last year, took third place in the state in the congressional debate presiding officer competition. Again, another phenomenal performance. Casey and Mahika, who are debate partners, both qualified and competed at the state championship tournament, and also qualified and competed at the national championship tournament this year as well. And of course, Sung Ju, who, for the second year in a row, and we like to joke he's going for number three, was the state runner-up in congressional debate at the state championship tournament last year, and is California, was part of California's first national championship team in World Schools Debate, which is an international competition event that varies from prepared debate to spontaneous debate, where again, the students are given the topics an hour ahead of time and are giving speeches north of eight minutes on topics of pretty significant substance. The final round topic, which I'm very proud the students affirmed, was this house believes housing is a fundamental, or human right. They won every coin toss in the elimination rounds, which is a statistical improbability. And Sung Ju competed on the national final stage, again, I think, the first time any Burbank student has ever done so. And I'm blown away at the achievements of these students. Another piece of news today that I would forget to just announce today. The National Speech and Debate Association puts together for World Schools Debate, a national team that represents the United States in international competitions across the globe. Sung Ju, last year, was on the Team USA Development Team. This year, he has been brought on to the Team USA main team. So he will represent the United States, and of course Burbank, across the globe in debate competitions. We're very excited. I'll just say, I do this because I was able to do so. And I know the impact that it had on me as a student and as an adult. And at a time when it can be very hard to be motivated by public discourse, I find inspiration in these students, and hope that they're going to do a lot better of a job than I could at making the world better. And if you are ever in a moment where you're having frustrations or concerns, come to a high school debate tournament. Watch these students who are assigned sides on a wide range of topics, and they have to be able to understand how to debate and speak about any topic on any particular side, which is, I think, we all would do, we all would be better if we were able to do that. Burbank High School is actually hosting, as it has for years, the individual event qualifying tournament to the state championship in March. Would love for any of you all to attend that. Yeah, yeah, we will be sure to let you know. And we hope to send an even larger group to the state tournament this year. Last year, we sent seven. And again, larger to the national tournament next year in Phoenix. Hot in June, but we'll do it. And we sent three this year. So we're hoping to keep on building as this team, which is impressively student-led and run, has done. I will pass it off to the students. And yeah, take it away.
Me?
Yeah, you.
Champion?
I wasn't prepared to speak tonight. I had no idea, but I suppose those are the skills that Speech and Debate ends up teaching you, right? So I'm honored to be here tonight. Thank you so much for having me. The last time I was at one of these meetings, it was because of a profound disagreement that I had with this board and Superintendent Hill. So I'm glad that we're not at odds tonight. That being said, I suppose I'll just say a few words on my experiences with debate and what it's meant to me. Like Dr. Ogakonyan and Board Member Huerta, I too am an ELD kid, and it's taught me, debate has taught me specifically, how to articulate my thoughts in an eloquent and verbose manner, and how to get my ideas across concisely. In that regard, I think that debate is so valuable to teach children and students all around the world what it means to be a member of your community, the issues that are going on, and what and how to solve those issues. That being said, the biggest takeaway from debate is that we can have profound disagreements, and how to articulate those disagreements while still being a community. And I think that's what I've taken away from it. Aside from the college applications, aside from everything great that this has to offer you materially, I think what it offers you is a place to be yourself and a family. And I'm very grateful to everyone who's made that possible, from Brandon, who dedicates hundreds of hours to all the members of our team that show up week in and week out. This doesn't happen often at public schools. It doesn't. For a debate team to bring home a national championship or to do well at the state tournament in an event that is often dominated by incredibly wealthy schools, incredibly wealthy students, and incredibly wealthy programs, is something that I take tremendous pride in, not only for myself, but the rest of my team, and every single hour that we've put in to do this. So for anyone listening out there, and to everyone at the schools inside of Burbank, we'd love to help you get started, if possible. We'd love to be a jumping point in a base frame. And I just wanted to thank you all again for having me tonight. Thank you so much.
The last thing I will say, and I will say, I am so grateful to Ms. Markison and the new administrative team at Burbank High School, who have really helped us hit the ground running. I mean, just today, we have a brand-new wrestling team in Burbank, at Burbank High, fantastic. They are in our new meet, our regular, what used to be our meeting space at our regular meeting time. So we were in the middle of this heat wave, trying to find a quick room, found one immediately, thanks to Mr. Wells, the ASB advisor. And it just, I'm really, we're really thankful for the administrative team and Ms. Markison. I think we're already, we feel very supported. And I will say, the one achievement that I did leave off, the National Speech and Debate Association recognizes a handful of programs every year, based on their both ability to attract and retain member competitors, but also the performance of those competitors. So Burbank High School was one of 22 schools across the country last year who were granted the NSDA's highest individual institution organization honor, which is the charter status, and sent us this lovely plaque, which I'm going to send back home with Ms. Markison, and hope that this will not be the last time we're here to tell you about some of the amazing stuff that these students are doing. So thank you again.
If it is okay, can the rest of the team also, don't leave, don't be shy.
She may have to go.
She may have to go somewhere.
If it is okay, if you can also introduce yourself quickly as well. And if you want to give a little debate speech, that's fine.
Sure. So hello, everyone. My name is Mahika Chechi, and I'm a senior. And I'm also the vice captain of our Speech and Debate Team at Burbank. I joined in our freshman year, and the team has changed a lot since then. We've lost members, gained members, gotten a new advisor. But I do want to say that I also was originally an English language learner in elementary school. I came to America when I was six years old, and I remember that the only word I knew how to say was egg. For some reason, that was like the only meal I would order, because it was genuinely the only thing I knew. And I hope my vocabulary has improved somewhat since then. And I think this activity has been incredible, because it's allowed me not only to improve my public speaking ability, but the memories I've gotten have been genuinely the highlight of my high school experience. And especially, I want to thank Brandon for coming in last year as our advisor, because without Brandon, we really wouldn't have been able to go to Nationals at all. We had a lot of issues with figuring out funding, transportation, all these things. So thanks to Brandon, we really were able to get that life-changing experience. And I hope in the future, we continue to have the support of the school board and the administrators to help us continue funding these activities and including growing our program. So thank you so much for your support of our team.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Delia Sawatsky. I believe you are a friend of my mother's. She's part of CEO.
Oh, yes!
I was in there texting her, like, "Do you know this woman? Her voice, I recognize it."
From all those Zoom meetings, right?
Or like a Christmas party.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I am a wise fool. I'm a sophomore. I believe I am the only sophomore who is still in the debate team, who joined freshman year. I double-qualified in international extemp and national extemp. And I was only able to do that with the help and support of my coach and my team, who got a lot of texts from me last minute, et cetera, et cetera. I am happy to be part of this team, which provides a great community. And I am happy to be at this meeting. It was very interesting to hear the concerns of students. I know that I also know a lot of concerns of students, so this is a good aid to go to for those concerns. So thank you, guys.
Hello, I'm Alexis Bell. And today, I just wanted to say, like, wow, Speech and Debate. I initially joined, I thought it was going to be, should we put pineapple on pizza, right? And I too, like Delia, did international debate, where I learned about countries I hadn't even known existed, and really experienced much wider than what I had been exposed to in Burbank. So that's one of the beauties, is learning about the politics, not just in the nation, but like internationally, and all the, I guess, things you aren't necessarily exposed to when you're growing up in the suburb of Burbank. But then also, you learn communication skills. And that's not just being able to create a speech on the fly, that's being able to structure a speech and using rhetoric, but also, it's a little bit difficult, because my first two years have been on Zoom. But even that, in and of itself, has been a learning experience on how to best communicate via Zoom. And now, entering my junior year, I'm very excited to start competing in person, where I know I'll be able to enhance my communication skills face-to-face with people. And you get the experience of having different judges with different morals, and being able to, I guess, apply to different groups. And that is such a beauty in itself, and I really wish that more people, BHS students specifically, would join and like know about this program, because it's so much more than what I initially thought of minor debates. There's speech opportunities, and you get to express yourself. And as I know, I can talk for all of the members of this group, we've had a chance to voice what we feel is important. Because specifically at BHS, there aren't a lot of opportunities where we can talk about what we feel is important. We feel limited in the change that we can make. Specifically, I'm very passionate about environmental change, and I wrote my own individual 10-minute speech on that, about plastic pollution. And there's very limited spaces that you're able to do that. And then, lastly, I wanted to conclude with a special thank you to Sung Ju and Brandon. First off, that Brandon just joined to simply volunteer, as he stated, Speech and Debate has done so much more for him, and thus, we can see how important that is in how he's returned. And then Sung Ju, one of the most intriguing individuals, I guess I would know, just really puts sweats and tears into this. Yes, debate includes late nights, early mornings, even if it's on Zoom, but he's always there to offer a helping hand. And I can speak for our whole team when I say, I know all of us would stay up rereading each speech, practicing over and over again, whether that's in Zoom or in person. And yeah, just to thank the board and everything for supporting us in our effort. And yeah, just to thank the board and everything for supporting us in our efforts. Thank you.
Madam Chair President, before you leave, first of all, I just found out about this. I would like, is there a transcript of your final debate or not?
There, there is a, there is a recording on YouTube of the final round. Also, I believe a vlog exists. I don't know about it. Found out about half the fact, but there is a, there is a final round video. If you Google or search on YouTube, 2022 World Schools Debate NSDA Final Round, that should.
So the reason I ask is that not only I would like to get the copy, make it available to the rest of the district, but also, even if we can get it in words, I like to immortalize the words and keep it as a record, because we are, you're national champions. It's a big deal, you know? So if we can do that, even I'm thinking at one point, putting some of your, your words on print, and so the students can see it and be inspired, that'd be wonderful. Second one is that, Madam President, I would like you to come back, if you can, next time, so we can present you also with certificates from the board, but also asking our elected officials to be here. I know we have a representative from our senator right here. So next time, maybe if you come back, hopefully you will, we can give you certificates on behalf of the, maybe the supervisor, senator, the assembly, and the school board. And the reason I say this again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a big deal to win Nationals, but also your inspiring stories. If I'm an ELD student, and I see two of you being the champions who were ELD students, that will make, that will help me. See, I don't have to debate because I look angry all the time, so people are like, I'm not going to debate with this guy. But, but I'm very proud of you, because this is a very big accomplishment. So if that is okay, Madam President, we'll maybe ask him to come back, maybe with the presentation of certificates and then acknowledging them. And congratulations again. And then I, how many of you are going to, are going to become attorneys, just out of curiosity? Have you thought about it yet?
No?
Yeah. There you go. See, good for you. Thank you. Congratulations, and you know, and I think, and then the young lady said pineapple on pizza, right? That's never a good idea, right?
Really? I think otherwise.
Oh, oh, let's start at the very beginning. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Can I?
Yes.
Thank you.
They want to take a picture, too.
Well, we'll, we'll get the photo op in. Okay, go ahead. Yep.
So we can post it, right? Ready? One, two, three. Nice.
Excellent.
By the way, who did you beat in finals? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Who did you beat in finals? I'm just curious.
They beat a team from Colorado.
Ohio.
Ohio, sorry. You beat a team from Colorado in the semifinals. They beat a, a very, very wealthy team from New York in quarterfinals. Yeah, they did very well. Western Ohio, I believe.
Well, thank you. I'm, I'm, are you good? Okay. Critical part about speech and debate is taking turns. So first things first, there's a very familiar face in the audience, and that is our coach, Mr. Brandon Batham. I had the privilege of attending Burbank High School with Mr. Batham, and we had the same advisor when this program was brought back from nonexistence, or from oblivion, frankly. And, and the year I participated was the very basic, basic year. We were getting out, waking up in the morning, wading through rounds constantly, disagreeing with judges, and, you know, arguing bias at times based off of the arguments we were making, but we were also, we qualified for state. And to see where this is now is so fulfilling, and to see Mr. Batham, who was the year after me, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because you guys kept it going and made it take off. And, and to see you now, after all these years, after coming back from Vermont, and now coming home, one, it's great to see you. Two, in these new roles, it's amazing. Growing up, growing older is fulfilling as heck, but when you get to pass down the things you're passionate about, and we've been always passionate about politics, always passionate about public policy, but to see you doing it in this way is such a testament to you. So I just want to recognize you for doing this all volunteer. That's huge. It's a lot of work and a lot of, and thank you for thanking him, because I know exactly what that is and how long it is. But so proud, so proud. Way to represent the institution, way to represent this community, way to represent your own story in a way that, that really delivered dividends. So just congratulations.
Please, ever.
There we go. First, I'd like just to say congratulations. I've known Sangju for a while, Mr. Chairman of the Youth Board. I've had the great honor of working with Sangju, and also, just a shout out to him on his articles in the New York Times as well. But I would just want to say how proud I am of you guys. It's truly amazing what you guys are doing, and I definitely want to get a picture with you guys if I can, because that trophy is impressive. I think you guys deserve all the props that you, that you have been doing. The hard work is being recognized. Keep up all the work that you guys do. I'm honestly just so impressed, myself being a political junkie as well. Just keep on doing what you're doing. I can't wait to see all the successful things that you guys do, and I definitely want a picture with all of you. And just, again, congratulations for myself, and I bet all the people from Burrows will be amazed at the things that you are doing, representing Burbank, and especially Sangju going to the USA team and representing us in Burbank and going to the United States and just debating. I just, congrats to all of you guys. I'm just blown away, and I'm so amazed.
Thank you, Mr. Huerta. Thank you for coming this evening. Thank you for your email, because these are, these are the types of programs that we need to know about and celebrate and bring forward. And I, I think BHSTV needs to do a segment and showcase you. I'll mention it to Ms. Nguyen, that, because you represented your school, and the students at Burbank High need to know what you've accomplished. And then that's also a way of hopefully bringing what you've done to light and gaining more members, so that, as Mr. Ferguson said, and as you said, this perpetuates and keeps on going. So I think that would be a big honor, and your fellow students need to know how hard you've worked and what you've accomplished in, you know, Burbank High School's name. So thank you for coming out. I am also a bulldog, and very, very, very impressed and proud of what you've done and brought to our high school. So thank you today. Good, everybody? Okay, good. Oh, I apologize.
You've heard us, I don't want to keep, although it's worth saying over and over again, how incredibly impressed we are with you. You know, Mr. Bell, the way you speak about your students and the passion that you've put into this is incredibly impressive, and I know that's how much this really means to you and to them. So thank you for that, and thank you for being with us for that. And to the students, anything you have to compete in, you know, to, against, you know, someone else, takes an incredible amount of time and dedication to whatever it is you're working on, to your craft, to, to learning how to do what you do in a way that's going to stand out. And clearly, you've all put in that kind of amount of time and learned, I think it was mentioned, in a time that there isn't really great debate in our country right now, that, you know, it is a skill that's clearly being lost. So this is, you know, a really impressive thing and a great thing for you to be able to learn and excel in. And, and I, yes, I'm incredibly impressed. As someone who, like all of us, has had to learn to speak in public, and sometimes without very much preparation, it's not an easy thing to do. And you guys have just blown it away and done such a fantastic job. And you will always be welcome here. We don't always have to agree. We don't always ever agree, but we love, as we've said before, love that you are passionate and want to speak about what's important to you, and that goes for all of you. So you're always going to be welcome back here, because you have represented us all so well, and, and yourself, and, and will continue to do so. So congratulations, all of you.
Okay. Moving on to number 11, request to address the board. An individual or group representative present this evening may address the Board of Education on any agenda item by completing a white request card, or blue in this case today, and turning to Ms. Ramirez-Adams. Speakers are requested to state their name prior to speaking to the board. Not more than five minutes may be allotted to each speaker, except by unanimous consent to the Board of Education. The superintendent may refer the matter to the proper department for review. We're also providing alternatives to in-person attendance for viewing and participating. Any individual or group representative may address the Board of Education on any agenda item or subject within its jurisdiction during one of the three public comments, but we're doing one tonight. Ms. Adams, Ms. Ramirez-Adams, do we have any virtual speakers that are still with us?
We do. We have two.
Two, okay. I'm going to start with our in-person ones. With that, we're going to start with Roberta Reynolds and Dave Kemp, followed by Arda Tchakchian.
Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, Superintendent Hill, district staffs, community members who are here with us, and those who are listening at home. My name is Roberta Reynolds. I'm a lifetime resident of Burbank, and I'm here with my friend, Dave Kemp, who is also a very longtime member of this community. And we are here this evening to simply say thank you to Ms. Kaktah. And if you'll indulge me, I would like to speak directly to Ms. Kaktah, and you all can listen while I do that. Okay? Ms. Kaktah, I first met you when our children were attending Jefferson. You were the PTA president. At that time, there was some strain and lack of understanding between the parents who worked outside the home and those who did not work outside the home. To keep this brief and not belabor the details, you navigated those waters to bridge understanding with grace, compassion, and dignity. Over time, those are the words that I use to describe you and your approach to life: grace, compassion, and dignity. Fast forward, we're at Burbank High. While I continue to be one of those parents who was working and also trying to volunteer for schools and support my children, you supported me and encouraged me to take on leadership roles that I did not believe I could perform, most specifically Burbank High PTSA president. You encouraged me to just say, yes, I'll give it a try. And then you did the same thing to encourage me to take on the role of council PTA president, and then, from there, circumstances repeated, and you encouraged me to run for the Board of Education, and I did not believe I could do that. However, we were able to accomplish a lot of things. You have given yourself at every level in this community, from preschool, parent education leader at council PTA, through all the schools, on to Board of Education, city treasurer, and finally, chief business officer for the Burbank Unified School District, all while serving in volunteer organizations too numerous to mention. At every step, you have operated with grace, compassion, and dignity. You've been a role model for all parents, particularly those trying to navigate both the professional and the volunteer world. Mr. Fritner has also been a benefactor of your model, that it really is possible to do it all. With that, the glass ceiling, so to speak, was broken for fathers to serve as PTA presidents, and as well as mothers who were working and working professionals. Mr. Fritner went on to become the first, and at this point only, male father member of, president of Burbank Council PTA. For all those things, our community thanks you, and I thank you. Your talents, gifts, and abilities will most certainly be missed when you depart your current role. However, I look forward to all the ways that you will continue to serve and make the world and this community a better place with grace, compassion, and dignity. And then hopefully, I've left a little time for my friend, Dave.
Thank you. Good evening, President Tabit, members of the board, and the student board members, and Superintendent Hill, and district staff. I'm here to speak on behalf of Debbie Kaktah, who's been a longtime friend. I want to thank you for your many years of unwavering loyalty and dedicated service to the city of Burbank and the Burbank Unified School District. You've been a pillar of excellence in all your, all your endeavors to serve this community. As a volunteer, a board member, a city treasurer, and now assistant superintendent, you've always gave your very best. I join Roberta in thanking you for your years of service, your leadership, and for your friendship, more than anything else, and for a career well done. May you have a happy and successful future. We will miss you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. Our next speaker is Arda Tchakchian, followed by Tara Wa.
Good evening, Board President Tabit and members of the Board of Education. My name is Arda Tchakchian. I am a district representative with the Office of State Senator Anthony Portantino. Senator Portantino wishes he could be here in person this evening to recognize Ms. Kaktah's dedicated service to our Burbank schools. Ms. Kaktah, on behalf of Senator Portantino, I would like to present you with this certificate of Senate recognition. Thank you for your exceptional dedication to our students. Your commitment to serving our community in the many leadership roles you have undertaken is truly an inspiration to all those who have worked alongside you. We wish you the best of luck in all of your future endeavors.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Oh, yes, sorry. Thank you, Tara. Thank you.
Hi, there.
Would you say your last name for me?
It's Wa.
Wa, because I really destroyed it. I apologize.
It's like, it's like Law, but with a W.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Let me just first say, congratulations to, again, the speech and debate team, and thank you, board members, thank you, Dr. Hill, and thank you, district staff. I am actually not a product of Burbank schools, but I am a product of the speech and debate team of Plano, Texas, and UC Berkeley, where I was the captain of the speech team, so I hope I don't embarrass myself tonight, you guys. Five minutes to get it right. All right. So I am here to discuss item number, agenda item number 13E, which is the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Specialist, and I'm here with good news, which is that I'm really happy about that, which is that, you know, I don't know Ms. Williams. I like her trauma-informed approach. I don't know personally whether we can get to see the scope of work and what kind of goals and accountability are written into service contracts, but if that's something that can be made available, that would be great. And I'm here to jump off that point, because what I really want to talk about tonight is that idea of inclusion. You want me to remember, I visited you guys, oh, maybe a month ago, and I'm back, and I'm not used to not being preceded by Joel, so it's new for me. So I'm here to tell you that anytime you guys have anything on the agenda that involves inclusion, I'm going to be here. And that's because this district doesn't seem to acknowledge that inclusion includes students with disabilities. Not only is this a general convention in education, that when you talk about inclusion, it's kind of the subtext of who you're talking about, it's actually in the California Department of Education Literature, right? In fact, the California Department of Education publishes a book, this is the second version, called Inclusion Works, subtitle, Creating Care Programs That Promote Belonging For Children With Disabilities. It's also on the California Department, excuse me, the California Teacher Association website, where they define appropriate inclusion as, CTA believes appropriate inclusion exists when students with IEPs and 504s attend age-appropriate general education classes and career and technical education in their home school for the same number of instructional minutes as their peers with appropriate support and funding. And yet, I should add too, that in addition to this kind of very technical, policy-driven definition, inclusion comes out of the Civil Rights Movement. I mean, it comes out of Brown versus Board of Education, Brown versus Board of Education. It comes out of the 1997 Individuals with Disability in Education Act, and it even comes out of the Affordable Care Act. So it has been institutionally and in policy embedded in there, and yet, nothing on the district's DEI website mentions disability. There is no visual representation of anyone with disabilities. To be fair, the slideshow on the DEI website only has three slides. Maybe it could have a few more. Maybe it could have a few more. And let me say, I mean, I went extensively through the last year of public presentations that were made by the DEI committee, and nothing in them really explicitly addressed this. In fact, in the June summary, I'm looking at the inclusion goal. The goal is to ensure curriculum and education materials are representative of our students' identities and cultural and ethnic heritage. There's nothing there. That's not to say I believe in marginalizing any other aspect of DEI. In fact, disability is intersectional. I think you guys probably have already heard, there are lots of statistics now about the incredible racial disparities involved in providing supports and services to students of color. There is also an incredible surge now in education, talking to students who consider themselves neurodivergent and autistic, that they self-identify as part of the LGBTQ community at three to four times the rate of students who are not identified in that way. So there's a lot of intersectionalism that includes disability, and we don't see it in any of the literature, and frankly, in any of the policy. So I'd really like to ask you guys some very specific things tonight. One is that you understand what inclusion is. Second is that any goal or mention of inclusion by this district explicitly articulate that it is in service of the disabled community. Just as when we talk about diversity, we explicitly mention race, ethnicity, culture. When we mention social justice, we mention the LGBTQ community. We need to make it explicit. And finally, I also want to see it addressed from a policy level, at the elementary school level. We do a lot for our high schools, you guys, but this stuff gets planted early. By the time students, and I'm sure the high school students on the Board can agree with me, by the time we get to high school, I don't want to say it's too late, but a lot of the work has been done and needs to be undone, and we can use that trauma-informed model early. I'll just leave you with this, I don't know if I'm allowed to leave you guys with documentation, but here is some documentation on inclusive teaching strategies from Yale Center for Education. I would encourage the Board to go ahead and take a look at this, especially the curriculum specifics. Inclusion is not just a touchy-feely term, it's action, and it's action that this district can take. Thank you. Can I give these guys to you?
Yeah. Hand them to Ms. Ramirez-Adams, and she'll pass them out.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wa.
You got it. Practice it. I'll be back.
You will. I'll be looking forward to it. Thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Michael Morgan, and then we'll go to our virtual speakers.
Good evening, President Tabit and school board, distinguished school board, as well as staff, and Burbank and Burrows. Good to see you all here. I was treated tonight to the opportunity to see the national championships of the world debate, to be here in Burbank. I did not expect that, I thought it was amazing. And it brought me back to when I was at John Burrows High School, and I had a teacher named Mr. Piper. I don't know if any of you know Mr. Piper, but he was a part of the JBHS debate team. And I had an amazing time being a part of that team. Mr. Marcos taught government, Chad Elwell taught English at the time, Mrs. Kaluia taught English at the time. We may have been a part of the same generation, a little bit across town, maybe, but it makes me really grateful for teachers who have impacted my life, specifically through Speech and Debate. I went to GCC as a pipeline for debate for one year, and then transferred to Washington University in St. Louis, where I continued, actually did my honors thesis in the political racial history of St. Louis, and participated and won some championships in Speech and Debate myself. So that being said, hello, Dr. Hill, I just watched the video on my iPhone of that debate, and the very first statement is this: "House. Housing is a right." That was how Burbank won. I'm going to spoil it for you all, sorry about that. And it made me think, related to, I guess, its agenda item 10A, why isn't housing a right in Burbank for teachers? Why isn't housing a right in Burbank for teachers? Because the teachers who I mentioned never were able to afford living in the city of Burbank the entire time they taught me. Mr. Marcos, Chad Elwell, Mr. Piper, they couldn't afford a home in Burbank. One man could, his name was Mr. Scott. I don't know if any of you know Mr. Scott, he taught health. I saw him at a block party the other day in the Rancho. He was roaring it up because he just moved to Texas. But that man owned a home. He was, he's kind of a funny man, if you know Mr. Scott, I know you do. But anyway, he was the one guy, he was the one teacher that owned a home in Burbank, no one else did. So here's what I'm suggesting to our group here. Why don't we come up with some innovative ways to support alternative housing for teachers in the city of Burbank? Now, we could go far up or far down, however we think about it. We could go Big Brother style, we could go Hype House style, we could go Influencer House style, TikTok style, whatever you want, but the idea of having programming around teachers all living in one community, one housing area, being able to teach in the city of Burbank, the media entertainment city of the world, capital of the world, I presented this exact idea to the city council when Sharon Springer and, there's another woman who went to Harvard, you remember her name? She used to be on...
[inaudible]
Yes, yeah, right on. So anyway, I spoke with her after, but I presented her with this idea of alternative housing, and it involved teachers. This was probably two or three years ago, closer to three years ago. And I never heard back from her, she ended up leaving shortly thereafter the city council. So I'm now returning to a new group here at the city council chambers, but I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, help find a way for teachers to be able to support themselves. It's not always going to be through pay raises. Right now, we have Calpers and Calsters, they just hit a 5% when they're supposed to be hitting 7% on pensions. So right now, it's not exactly the best time to be a teacher in California, from a lot of perspectives, but we want to attract the top talent, we want to attract the best people. We need to raise salaries for teachers, we need to provide them with better benefits, if that means an independent study or research for how we can do our own pension here in Burbank. These are the things that we need. But thirdly, we need to have housing for teachers. Housing is anywhere from $2,300 to $3,500 a month, every single month, for teachers, for substitute teachers included. So let there be, hopefully, a percolation of thoughts. I appreciate Mr. Ferguson's interest as I'm speaking. That's the one thing you learn in Speech and Debate, you focus on the person who's interested in what you're saying. For all of you all else, I hope you really think about this and consider it, because future generations can't afford to stay in Burbank. I had a conversation with the Burbank Realtors Association this evening, talking about elements involved with the school board races in November. And one of the things they said is, compared to other school districts, let's say, Nevado School District, which is up in Marion County, the way that Realtors, real estate, and the idea of moving to a city and working there in that district is done very, very differently than it is in Burbank. If you look at the Nevado School District website, one of the first tokens on the webpage, front page, is "for Realtors." And it makes Realtors think, oh, great, here's all the analysis, here's all the research, everything I need to know about housing. If you look at the BUSD website, no such thing exists. And I asked him, I said, "Do you think that this website could be improved for Realtors and families who are thinking of moving to Burbank?" He said, "Absolutely." So I guess that would be a second idea, is whoever runs your website, just to look into it, whoever your webmaster is, how can we maybe bring that up to date a little bit and focus on this idea of attracting the absolute top and best talent to Burbank? With that said, I'm very grateful to you all. I think having these two members of the Board is amazing. John Burrows High School is a very different place now than it was when I was there, but I'm very grateful to see that things are moving and progressing. Congratulations to the new principal of Burbank High School, I think that's fantastic. That has been a slow train, but it finally found its location. So with that said, thank you all for having me. I hope to be more visible in future events. I am actually a product of Burbank High Schools, I taught in Burbank High Schools, and I think the homegrown approach to Burbank is few and far between these days. And so whenever you see people who you know, and who know when Papu's Hot Dogs existed and was not a veggie grill, although I'm very happy as a vegan that it is, I think that's awesome. The last thing I'm going to say, real quick, this is off the topic of housing, but I did present someone at Burrows High School with a sheet talking about school lunches, and I would say, I would encourage everyone on this Board to look into what's happening right now with school lunches. There was a bill that was passed by an Assembly member here in the San Fernando Valley to support vegan lunches, or what I would call cruelty-free lunches, and currently, those are available for free without any expenditures. And so that is something that we can all adopt as a district. I haven't seen any adoption, I would love to see adoption, I think the students would as well. The last thing on that would be, again, just options and how we can eat better and be more healthy. I think public safety is something that this Board has shown they're committed to, and I'm very grateful for that. I think the next step is preventative safety measures for health. Part of that includes school lunches, what it is we're eating, how we're eating it. The last thing I'll say is, there have been some changes made in the state of California through legislation around breakfasts and free lunch breakfasts. We now are able to actually have milk substitutes or dairy substitutes instead of milk, so we can have dairy-free smoothies, and that can be a protein-based meal for students in the mornings. And everyone's receiving a free lunch now in California, and I'm very grateful to be able to just share a couple of those progressive ideas with you. Thank you.
All right, we can move to our two virtual speakers. We have Ada Kennedy and Vida Morales. Is that correct?
Yes, I just promoted them. Vida Morales, can you hear me? And I believe you're with Ada.
Yes.
So do you want to go at the same time? Or just take one at a time?
Okay, I guess I will be going first. She's just at my house because we thought it might be fun to perform together in a way. So, thank you, the one, let me just get off my speech. Oh, this is, okay. Good evening, Board members, I'm Vida Morales, a seventh grader attending Luther Burbank Middle School, and today I will be talking about the discrimination in the dress code policy enforcement. One of the main reasons I decided to go to Luther and not somewhere else was because of how equal and supportive the dress code was. A dress code may just seem like a few rules, but in reality, it shows the school's character, empathy, and respect. August 3, 2021, before the start of sixth grade, I signed my signature proudly on the dress code agreement. I could tell when I read the following lines, Luther would treat me fairly as a girl and not discriminate or shame me because of my gender. Here are a few lines from the dress code. Students may wear tank tops, including spaghetti straps, off-the-shoulder tops, and halter tops. Staff shall not shame a student in front of others, which includes calling out students in front of others, accusing students of distracting others with their clothing, and making critical or judgmental comments about a student's attire. No student shall be subjected to dress code enforcement because of sex assigned at birth, body size, or type or body maturity. This year, things changed. Before this school year, I signed my signature again, agreeing to the policies on the dress code. Nothing changed on it, it was the same one I signed in 2021. About a week into the school year, an assembly was held discussing the behavioral expectations for this upcoming school year. A speaker went into the dress code, all of a sudden, I hear an adult man stating a new dress code. A dress code that does not allow girls to show any part of their bra, this includes bra straps, and a midriff, and it was said that these parts of a girl's body were distracting. This violates both the dress code agreement and the trust I had in Luther. This was all announced after many students had already gone back to school shopping for clothes. I have personal experience with this, and many items of clothing I was not able to get a refund for, a lot of money was wasted. This is just another way of controlling women, by promoting this, they are promoting a culture of discrimination. I want you to understand that I'm not trying to wear a baby suit to school, but they are dress coding girls for wearing tank tops that show a bra strap. We can't control if our bra straps show, we have to do PE, making it impossible to wear a strapless bra. Even if it was possible, we should not be expected to change our undergarments for the comfort of male administrators. I have personally witnessed a girl getting dress coded in a tank top with no bra strap showing because she had a larger chest. Yet another girl with a smaller chest was not dress coded, even though she had an almost identical tank top. Another case was when a girl was dress coded for wearing baggy sweatpants, yet countless boys in my classes sagged their pants, which is not allowed, and have faced no punishment, even after people asked about it. I don't understand what they want from us. We can't show our bodies because that's distracting, but we can't wear baggy clothes because that's also distracting. All we want to do is go to school and receive an education. We need a dress code that allows girls to be free to wear what they feel comfortable in and not be called a distraction. And also, personally, I love the style of sagging pants, but if that's what the boys feel comfortable with, what harm would it do to then to allow them to wear what they want? Thank you for hearing me out, I'm Vida Morales, have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Are we hearing from Ada as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello. Thank you for having me, Board of Education, my name is Ada Kennedy, I'm a seventh grader at Luther Burbank Middle School, and I'm here to discuss the unfairness within the new enforcement of the dress code policy at Luther. I came here because at Luther, the answer to all of our complaints was that they couldn't change it, and although they understood, they didn't have enough power to do so. But I wanted change, so, here we go. I'm sorry, is my shoulder showing? Even in modern-day society, girls of all different body types are faced with oppression for the simple reason of being female. When I finally gained enough confidence to be able to be proud of my skin for the first time in years, whether that be in a tank top, crop top, tube top, shorts, et cetera, I feel that I have earned the right to be proud. Especially in middle school, where bodies are changing and insecurities are growing, one voice more than the ones in your head saying your 11- or 12-year-old body is unacceptable could break you. Confidence in young women is a rare token that should not be carelessly tested every day at the place where we're supposed to learn. I'm sorry, is my bra strap showing? When I get dressed in the morning, my priority is to look good and be comfortable. I thought that was what the school cared about too, but I guess not. How am I supposed to be comfortable walking around school, working in class, when all I can think about is how I need to cover up my body because it's distracting boys in school? Especially in California summer heat, I need to wear a tank top. When I wear a tank top, my bra strap might show. This should not and should never be a reason for me to be sent to the principal's office. So are we supposed to wear strapless bras? For students with heavier cleavage, they would easily ball off, and similarly, for students without. Either way, no one in Luther should have to change their undergarments for the approval of school staff. When I spoke about this at Luther, one of the teachers made the claim that school is a place for learning, and therefore, we should wear professional attire. If we saw our teachers wearing a tank top to school, we would not be able to take them seriously, so we shouldn't wear them either, she stated. There are many things wrong with what she said, not only the first of them being that if my teacher wouldn't take me seriously because of what I was wearing, that would be their problem. Another thing is that by saying our bodies are unprofessional, we're creating an unbalanced environment that is unaccepting of confidence and even destroying it. Either way, it shouldn't be our responsibility to buy a new wardrobe, especially when many students may not have the materials or free money to do so. When you blame girls for distracting the boys with their clothing, you are breaking our willpower. If this is a place for professionalism, then teach the boys not to gawk at our collarbones, tell them to focus on their work. By pulling girls aside because their skin is distracting other students, you're proving that the boys' education is more important than the girls'. You're taking out hours from our education to make sure we cover up pieces of slim fabric that keep our bra off. I'm sorry, is my midriff showing? Last year, I was not only fine, I was excited to be in this new adventure. A main thing I respected about Luther's education system was how equally they treated students and how accepting they were of women's bodies. I guess I was wrong. Last year, we signed an agreement addressing the school dress code policy. It seemed reasonable. This year, I was created with the same one, and the same signature was inked on it. What we are now being told is not what I signed for. Luther is enforcing a dress code that is different from the one we all agreed to. They have added things to the policy that were not on the boards, this injustice in a school that claims to be inclusive and equal. Instead of making progress, even baby steps in the right direction, we are revamping. Rules that are being enforced in us now were rules I thought were never going to be a problem. Now I'm actually getting worried, as are most students in Luther. By forcing us to cover up our bodies and be ashamed of our skin, we are retreating back in time. I think most of the school will agree with me when I say we will not quietly go back to the 1900s. By limiting our rights, you are limiting us, and I don't think that's what Luther should want. Thank you so much for having me here, I'm Ada Kennedy, and have a great night.
Thank you so much, Ada. No further speakers? None on my list? Okay. Thank you so very much. We can now hear from staff responses.
Thank you, President Tabit, and thank you to all the speakers. I'm going to start with Vida and Ada. Thank you both so much for, especially on the school night, staying with us and advocating so well. Hopefully, you were able to see and hear the debate and speech presentation earlier, because I highly encourage you both to try out and start. That was very well said. I'm going to keep it brief, because the solution should be very brief. We had student board members a couple of years ago raise the same concerns that you just raised, and we went through a very long process with them to update the board policy. That was really student-led, student-board member-led and driven, that worked with our school board and our administration, and we revised it. And what you signed is exactly what the board policy is around dress code. All the concerns that you highlighted tonight were the concerns that were raised. All the concerns that you highlighted tonight were the concerns that were raised and we wanted to address. I'm going to have Dr. Paramo, and if needed be, I'll support him in the conversation at Luther, and we'll go to all of our schools and make sure the dress code is being enforced the way that you signed it. So we want to make sure that all of our students feel respected, included. It should not be a discriminatory dress code. So we did change that, and now we got to make sure we're enforcing it the correct way. So thank you for your advocacy. For the other speakers, thank you so much for joining this evening as well. Dr. Reynolds, Mr. Kemp, thank you for your spot-on words for Ms. Kukta. She has given so much to this district and this community, and we're greatly going to miss you. And you said it so, so well. Mr. Chakky, and thank Senator Portantino as well for his recognition and honoring as well. Ms. Waugh, thank you for being very specific and detailed. We do need to be more explicit around inclusion and what we mean by all students, our neurodiverse students, our students with disabilities, all of our special education students, students on 504 plans. So we will continue to review how we talk about the work, how we promote it, and more importantly, how we're implementing this work, so that we're focused on that. So thank you for that, those comments. Mr. Morgan, really appreciate your ideas. I'm going to work with staff and look at the ones that we can move on immediately, and then some of those are going to require collaboration with the board and partnerships, especially around housing, but I appreciate your creative suggestions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Board comments now? What does that mean? Let Mr. Fritner go first?
I've got paper scissors.
Okay. Mr. Fritner?
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all our speakers for coming out tonight and those joining us virtually. And I will address Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Morales first. I was surprised to hear your comments, because as the superintendent pointed out, this was an issue that I thought we had resolved a few years ago. We had students at the time-- I believe it was Mr. Khan was the Burbank-- Burroughs High Rep, and I forget who was the Burbank High Rep at that time, but we all went through a process. Mr. Ferguson, I believe, were the board members on that committee, addressed almost all the same concerns that you're mentioning. And that's why the dress policy was written that way. And I'm surprised to hear that it's-- that something different is being enforced on students. And that shouldn't be the case. And we can't have a policy written that is not going to be followed. Our female students should not be made to feel uncomfortable or ashamed by what they're wearing, even if it doesn't fit the morals of certain staff members. So, yes, I would hope that we can get this resolved very quickly. Ms. Chakky, and thank you for representing the senator and for the recognition for Ms. Kukta. Incredibly well-deserved. Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Kemp, thank you for coming out. It's wonderful to see both of you, as always, when we get the opportunity. We are second to none in the respect for Ms. Kukta and the accolades that you keep on her. And I think we still have one meeting to go, right? Before we actually have to say goodbye for good? Or is this-- Oh, okay, I was thinking we still had one more meeting. Well, we will greatly miss having you in the administration. Your service to not just the district, but the city of Burbank has been pretty much second to none. You've covered so many bases and done so many jobs. But beyond that, the support, the friendship that you have provided for myself, as well as everyone else, is something I-- will be hard to move on from. But not like we won't see you anymore. But not being able to work with you in support of the district will be-- even with my limited time left, will be something I will miss. Thank you for everything you've done for the district and the support you've provided. And we will miss you. Ms. Waugh, thank you, and I hope you do continue coming out every time we have DEI on the We do need to be more clear and more definitive to be totally inclusive. It's very easy to think, oh, we meant it to be for everyone. We want to represent everyone and everyone equally. And if you don't state that, it doesn't always come out that way. And there are groups that can be missed or not have their needs addressed if you don't spell it out. So thank you for pointing that out. Thank you for the information. I look forward to having time to read this and read through it. We have had advocates for the-- you know, for the disabled, very specifically Janet Deal has been very active in our community and on SFOC in trying to make sure that we have had accommodations in place that represented them very well. So I welcome your input in that area as well, and we will have to do better and continue to do better. Mr. Morgan, housing for teachers, you're right, is a huge problem. Thank you for speaking on that. It's very easy to say it is a problem, but it's not our problem, because we don't create housing and we don't-- you know, and we can't do this. But that's not going to solve the problem either by just saying, well, it's not our responsibility. The city council should be doing more to provide housing. And they are, they're working on that as well. But it, as I said, it doesn't solve the problem. And as you mentioned, there are other districts in the state who have moved on this issue in different ways, creative ways, including building affordable housing for their employees. Is that something we can do? I don't know, because certainly it takes an investment of capital, which we don't have at the present time, but maybe there are partnerships to work-- to work-- you know, to create this, to make it happen, both with the city and with private developers. We need to think creatively to try and find better solutions for that. And we'll have to continue working towards that goal. Because we do-- I would love for all of our teachers to live in Burbank. For one thing, I've been living here for, you know, 30 years, almost 30 years. You know, there's a reason why I stayed here when we bought a home, why we bought it here, because it's a great city and we wanted to be here. And we want our employees to feel that ownership also. Mr. Batham talked about how he's living in the house he grew up in, and that's important for people who are interacting to be able to feel part of the community as well. So we'll have to continue-- thank you for bringing the subject forward, and it is something that we'll have to, you know, keep looking for creative solutions and possibilities. So, thank you. And that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Agarwal.
I do concur what my colleague said about the dress code. We spend a lot of time on the topic, and thank you for the-- young ladies, you should join the debate team. But more important also, you know, I'm certain we're going to address this quickly. We had a lot of people spoke about the topic, so I'm kind of surprised. But again, I would like an update once we address this. But also, I think it's great-- one of my colleagues said to our new members that it's important that you come forward and tell us. So thank you for the-- our students coming forward and being brave enough to come and talk about this. And I think this board, I think, has set a really good standard, allowing our students to come forward and talk about their topics and concerns. So thank you very much, and I'm sure we're going to address that. Ms. Waugh, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's not only important, but it's also the law. So I would love to see a copy of how we can bring what you just provided us, but also in writing, so we can put it into the language and start addressing this. As someone who's been active with, you know, individuals with disabilities, unfortunately, sometimes people forget, and sometimes they don't have the voice they need. So thank you for doing this, and I can tell you that we will make sure that we'll move forward with this, but also will appreciate your help as well and expertise. Dr. Reynolds and Mr. Kemp, it's always good to see you. I will keep my speech at the end for Ms. Kukta Dankinger. So I will leave that for the end, but it's always great to see you. And then, as far as the housing issue goes, I'm not going to get into it much, but you know what? I always hear these concerns about realtors and, you know, people always say people come to Burbank because of our schools. But, you know, I want us to-- you really want to solve this problem? Go repeal Prop 13. I'm sorry. I mean, that is the issue here. I lived in a country, Germany, which teachers are very highly paid, housing is very expensive, but teachers are paid very well. It's a funding issue. So unless we start repealing Prop 13, which some realtors might not happy about hearing, then we're going to have this challenge all the time. It's the way we get funded. But it's a-- housing-- affordable housing, that's a great idea, but I want to talk about how we can pay our teachers more so they can afford to live in Burbank, but also at the same time, how we can really look at changing the law. We get this Band-Aid approach, one-time funding. It's not helping our teachers. They should be paid well for what they do, but also, you know, people forget, the way we get funded, it's from the state. Unless we change the formula, cities like Burbank are going to struggle. This is a media-- this is a middle-class community, you know? And sometimes people forget how we get funded. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Weisberg?
Yeah, thanks to everybody. I'm going to work backwards a little bit. Mr. Morgan, thank you so much for your comments. Mr. Ferguson and I have been talking for the better part of a year about how we can work with the city to provide more affordable housing, not only for our teachers, but also for our first responders, many of whom can also not afford to live in Burbank. And as a renter, I'm getting paresly close to not being able to afford to live in Burbank. So there's lots of different things that we could talk about, but I think the most important thing is to really be working with our elected city officials to figure out ways. And we know that there's a commitment they've made to build a set amount of housing in Burbank. What I have already asked for, and will hopefully hear back from, and know other people and other constituents have as well, is what portion of that will be affordable housing? What level of affordable housing? How big will the units be? We know that there's some microhousing right now, but it's 600 square feet. So if you're a person who has anything other than a goldfish, that is not a reasonable solution for you. So I do think it is solvable. I know that council has been thinking about it. I think it is something that we, as board members, need to continue to push, whether that's in the joint meetings that we're now having multiple times a year or just through continued advocacy. But, you know, even something like our hopefully proposed new central library, there's talk again about it being mixed-use, and there might be housing there as well. So the good news is-- I mean, it's not great news, because we don't have answers, but the good news is this has been at the forefront of many people's minds. Because of what we're not able to pay our teachers due to budgeting, one of the things we want to figure out is what are the other incentives we can offer? Because of course, people want to live in Burbank. It's a great place to live. So if we can't pay you what Glendale Unified can pay you, as we're trying to work that out, maybe we can incentivize your housing. So I'm really happy to hear you bring it up, know that it is something that we have been talking about and are going to continue to move on. And I hope other community members will continue to weigh in on the importance of making sure that our teachers and first responders can live in the place that they work and invest in that community. Tara, thank you a thousand times. I'd love to sit down and talk with you further. Something that I've talked with Dr. Hill about for probably the better part of a year as well is really making sure that when we talk about DEI, we're talking about Big Tent DEI, that it is neurodiverse, it is our differently-abled students, that we are not eliminating certain groups, that everybody is included. That doesn't mean that, you know, when we think about equity, certain groups need different things and different amounts at different times. I don't hear you saying you're asking for, you know, equality. You're asking for equity, which every group deserves. And so I know that for all of us, I'll take personal responsibility, just for me. The way that I often talk about DEI does omit student groups, and I need to do a better job of not only the way I talk about it, but also the way I think about it. So I'm thankful for your continual advocacy. It's really important. I will definitely read what you gave us, and I hope, you know, maybe we can hop on the phone or grab a coffee and just talk further, because it isn't-- for me, my DEI background, that's not my area of expertise. I have an enormous amount to learn about everything. But this is an area that I specifically, you know, would love to be directed towards things I can be reading and looking at, so that we can make this, you know, not only something that we say, but something that we authentically do. So thank you, and I think like Mr. Fritner said, I hope you will come back and continue to remind us and educate us, because I know I need it. Thank you, Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Kemp, for your phenomenal words about Ms. Kupka. I'm going to say more things offline, but I do want to say that, you know, as the newest board member, starting on school board is really difficult. There's no kind of manual to help you get started, and you were endlessly and continued to be patient with me and sat through what I know were stupid questions and never made me feel stupid when I asked them. So I'm just, you know, endlessly grateful to you for just your generosity and your patience and your kindness and your willingness to go over things with me that you've already gone over before. So I just know that I would not have been able to navigate my first year and change without your support, and I will be forever grateful. More to follow, but I don't want to, you know-- To Ada and Vida, who I think-- I think they disappeared off Zoom, yes? I didn't see them anymore.
They're watching as attendees.
If it was appropriate to give you a standing ovation, I would do so. It is really disappointing to me to hear that after all of that time and effort went into crafting a dress code, that students and faculty and admin and district staff all agreed upon that people would feel it appropriate to circumvent that and make other Because I know that's not-- you know, I thought Dr. Hill expressed it excellently. It's not what we want. It's not what I want, for sure. And as a teacher, I'm constantly having conversations with my female students about the sort of inherent sexism of dress code and how we often tell girls to cover up as opposed to talking to cisgender men about not objectifying women for what they wear. You said a lot of really powerful things that I wrote down, just about how important confidence is and how easily you can get cut down when somebody calls you out for what you may or may not be wearing. It takes a lot of bravery to stand up and speak out, especially because I'm sure it felt like a lonely thing to do tonight, the two of you choosing to speak on Zoom. I know there was some conversation on campus. I can't remember the cool name for the group. I tried to find it in my email, but it was a cool name for the group of young ladies who are speaking out against this. I'm sorry that you had to advocate in this way and that you signed something that wasn't respected, but I am 100% sure that the dress code will be-- I'm sorry that you had to advocate in this way and that you signed something that wasn't respected, but I am 100% sure that the dress code will be honored the way that it was written and that what you sign will be what you follow. I know Dr. Pramo, you know, agrees, Dr. Hill agrees, I think the, the board agrees. And I want you to, I want to encourage you to continue to speak up and speak out and advocate. In December, I think Mr. Ferguson and I will be kicking off our Student Advisory Council, which is intended to bring students together in middle and high school to advocate for issues, so I hope you'll consider being involved in that. And I hope you'll come back if there are other issues, but I am really sort of shocked and saddened to hear this. I teach middle school, and I know, I know how hard it can be. It's not about me, but I just empathize because I have these conversations with my female and male students self-identified every day, and I just want you to know that, that we hear you and that this, this situation is going to be fixed and addressed immediately. So, so thank you, and I think, I think that's all I have. But, thank you to all the speakers tonight. It was greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Dr., Mr. Ferguson, I apologize.
It's a heck of a promotion for me, so thank you.
Congratulations.
Not really. First to, thank you to all of our speakers who came down this evening. First to our students, Vida and Ada. Not okay. And if there was an employer who said that to an employee, we wouldn't tell them to join the speech and debate team. So, I think it's highly inappropriate, and I think more than just a check-in on policies needs to occur, because we have students coming to a board meeting confessing they don't feel safe. That's the underlying subtext here, and it's not okay. And maybe because we have eight new principals, we need to re-talk about this again at a principal's meeting, both at the secondary and the primary level, to re-establish norms in this district, because there is history, but that history is not understood because there is such a high volume of turnover. And now it's impacting students. Not okay. They don't feel safe. That is our first responsibility. So, I would like an update with information as appropriate as to what steps have been taken, what we have done before the end of business tomorrow, and certainly with a game plan of what's happening next week to address this. Not okay. To our students, you are amazing. I am so sorry that you had to come to us to have something that just makes sense be implemented correctly. Not okay. I mean, come on. Middle school. To Mr. Kemp, to Dr. Reynolds, honorable, the honorables who used to serve in these chairs, thank you so much. It's great to see both of you. It was a privilege serving with you as a student board member, and it certainly has been a privilege to serve with Ms. Kukta. I said my comments last week, last meeting, a little bit, but it's absolutely devastating. But, I'm happy for her. More time with the grandkids, come on. I, I, there's nothing that replaces that. But, you all left a legacy here, and it's a legacy I certainly still strive to live up to in many different ways, one of which is ongoing education. Dr. Reynolds and many, a late-night phone call when I was running for this office to begin with, said, "If you're ever going to get in this, you're going to go to Masters in Governance, and you're going to learn, because the education, the issues education faces evolve, and it's important to keep to it." I got my Masters in Governance certificate, was very, very proud of that, but also want to tell you that that legacy continues, as I've just graduated from the L.A. County School Trustees Association, ongoing training for board members. These jobs aren't passive. We have to work actively to refine our skill sets, so we know what to advocate for, so we know how to advocate, and we know how to change policy locally to adapt to the needs that education needs to rise to. And so, I want to thank you for, for recognizing Ms. Kukta. I know there's a long love and history here for Ms. Kukta, and let's be real, Ms. Kukta has changed this, this city forever and for the good. So, thank you very much. It's great to see both of you, and, and thank you for your service to our community. To Ms. Waugh, thank you for your advocacy. Again, I remembered you from the joint meeting. I was like, "Great, fantastic." I, I appreciate your, your participation, and it's not for a lack of asking, but we, we need to stay on it, and we need to follow up and be more proactive in, in how this is being implemented. I, I, you know, hear from Dr. Weisberg, an emphasized focus on this. I, I agree and support that, and, and as we continue to continue, first of all, also thank you for the resources. Resources are critical on this front. I feel like I'll do a ton of reading, and then frankly, you know, if something else comes up that I, I just feel ignorant on and I, I need to do the work. So, when we have something like this, and, and you distributed it for us, thank you for preparing it for us, it, it really helps us to continue to move, just like this training. We need training on this front as well. DEI is an increased focus, but really understanding what that fully means, the more inclusive, I think Dr. Weisberg called it the Big Tent approach to it, absolutely. And, and I am learning more every day, but I appreciate a part, a partner in that learning. So, thank you for that, and I will make sure to read this, and I would like to book some time with you, really to, to hear more, because I think between your contributions at the joint meeting and now, I, I hear it. And, and you will hear me from time to time and, you know, worked extensively with Dr. Reynolds about twice-exceptional students, you name it. The today issue with the fans being deployed in classes, how we think about that, how we break that down. Those are simple decisions and simple fixes in our minds, but if we don't think about those impacts, if we don't understand how students are learning differently in their schools, we're not going to anticipate that. And, and that's not a compassionate model for education. That's a subjective model. So, I just, I really appreciate the partnership, and we'll continue to learn, and thanks for To Mr. Morgan, I really, I appreciate your energy, I appreciate your thinking and your creativity, because I think that education does a phenomenal job of reminding us of all the things we can't do. And by the way, I'm very proud to work for the man who introduced ABE 558, which brought subsidies to plant-based meals in, in California. And there is a great amount of funding to not only help fund the cost of those foods, but also to improve kitchens and to rent, and, you know, enter into renovations so that healthier, plant-based meals can be offered to students and to parents across, across the state. That's money that's also available potentially for Burbank Unified, and so if, if that's a part of our, I, I certainly hope we would take advantage of that, and, and really, again, love the innovative thinking. I went to Ms. Kukta a week or a few weeks ago and said, "Hey, let's think outside the box a little bit. Tell me no, but if, if anything is a yes, maybe," right? Maybe we improve the quality of, of experience, maybe we improve engagement. Housing, without a doubt. You speak to our teachers, you speak to our classified, right? They're struggling and exhausted, right? And, and I used to, my mom used to work in Porter Ranch, and I remember how exhausted she was when she drove home. And I think about that when I think about our employees, because I hear about how many of them are driving that far and even further. I think about the time away from their families, and I also think about just, just what that day looks like and how much of that day disappears. So, I, I definitely see it as a priority. I think there are innovative ways we can address this problem, collaborate, partner, you name it, to do that. Housing is one component, compensation certainly, as Dr. Aga Khanian illustrated, certainly another, but, but really, it is a comprehensive approach. It is also about education, right? And, and educating people so that they're aware of just how serious it is. We're all struggling a little bit with inflation, but when you haven't gotten raises or received raises year after year after year and just got a raise, it, it doesn't help. You're, you're still gasping financially for air. I, I also am a renter in this community, and I will tell you, it's exhausting when an entire paycheck is obliterated by rent. But, as you said, we are people who grew up here, and there's a certain level of rudiness that has been established that I just will never, I love this community, and, and I will fight like heck to stay here for as long as I can afford it. But, I have to be honest, I'm doing better than a lot of my peers, and I worry about them. And I worry about them with young families, right? Who are trying to make this, and, and again, maybe long commutes, right? So, it all feeds into it, but I want you to know that you have a partner in innovation with this. Congratulations on your own candidacy. Be an idea person. Help elevate the conversation and dialogue here. We need it. We're losing folks to compensation, to a number of issues, and we need to be the innovative district to draw people in. When I go to these meetings with the L.A. County School Trustees Association, we have a great reputation, but we have a great representation because of a lot of people in this room who served before us, who worked really hard, who thought outside the box, who updated policies, who thought things through. We've got to maintain that for future generations, and that requires, again, a commitment to new ideas, not staying in the same rut, and yes, educating ourselves. So, thanks for being a part of that conversation, and good luck. Last but not least, I, I do want to take a moment to thank Arda from Senator Portantino's office, and, and truthfully, you know, I, I do, I'm very proud of, of what I do for a living, but in that process, I have learned so much more about our state government and, and the state legislature. The state legislature just went through a marathon votarama where all bills basically die on August 31st. They died all last night. So, if they weren't passed and headed to the governor, they're done. And we have two very big champions representing Burbank. Assemblywoman Friedman, who won and put tons of points on the board as it related to transportation improvements and a number of other fronts. But Senator Portantino, when it comes to school funding, when it comes to a, a number of frankly reforms that he's able to implement, especially his chair of budget, it, it is truly tremendous to see what he has been able to deliver for Burbank Unified, for Burbank, and for the region. So, I want to thank our assembly member, I want to thank our state senators who were up late last night fighting for bills. Senator Portantino actually had the last bill that was heard in the, the assembly, and it missed it by one vote, but really, truly, thank you for your representation. I, I have a unique perspective because I'm able to see it firsthand, and, and from the gallery in the Senate, on Tuesday, I waved, and I just said, "Thank you," because I know he fought for kids, and you know, I know he fought for our kids. So, thank you, and our best to your boss.
Thank you. It's sometimes a difficult position to be fifth and think of something that one of my amazing colleagues hasn't already said. Ms. Waugh, first of all, thank you very much for the information. There's been several issues come to light regarding exactly what you've brought to us in the last year or two specifically. So, I too would love to talk with you offline and see some of the, hear about some of the experiences that you and your family have been through and see where we can go with this. It's, it's, I had to, I, I followed Dr. Weisberg in her thoughts about, sometimes when we think of DEI, I don't always think about these students that you're talking about as well. And, and we are and promote being lifelong learners, and so there's a constant need to learn and grow and add to what you already are thinking or have learned. So, thank you, thank you. And please, come as often as you like and bring whatever information you have. I'm happy to hear it. So, Arda, I missed you the other night. There was a, a new guy in your place because you've gone back to school, and so congratulations on that. I know that takes a lot of time and effort when you're working full-time to also put school in, but it's important, and thank you for that. I was at an event with the chamber that focused on our program at the adult school where we're working with the West Coast Customs, and they provided a program for our students to learn how to redo custom cars, from new ones to old ones, and they've taken them all the way through the process. And the beautiful part about this is the project will end, and they'll graduate, and they'll be marketable, job marketable. And so, we're very excited about this. It's been a while since we've had a fantastic new program at the adult school, and because of COVID, not because we're not interested in promoting things, of course we are, but it's a great program where the adults that participate in that will come out at the end with a marketable skill, and I just think that's an amazing thing. So, I miss seeing you there, and thank you for all you do to support the senator and everything he does, because we are lucky to have him as a partner. He's done a lot of amazing things in this community, and I see that coming up, he'll continue to do that. So, we're appreciative. Thank you, and thank you for coming out, Arda, Senator Portantino, Mr. Kemp, Dr. Reynolds, all of you to celebrate and thank the amazing Mrs. Kukta. I think Dr. Reynolds said it beautifully when she talked about your grace, your presence, your patience. Dr. Reynolds talked about being a new board member and how you were easily able to explain to her what this meant and what that meant. And I, as a seasoned, older board member, I've been around a couple of terms, I still come, and you're still able to be patient with me. "Oh, let me explain this," or "Let me get back to you on this, and let's see what we can do." It, it's never just an automatic no, which I appreciate, but more of a, "Well, let me see. The answer might be no, but let's see if we can work on this." And I've always appreciated that with you, so thank you. And I hope, as you say, we're going to see you around. I've got plans for you, so hopefully we get to continue with those. So, thank you, and I, you've just been amazing this entire time, and it's, there's great things down the road for all of us, but grandchildren, grandchildren. So, I can say that now because I have one coming along too. Wow. Okay. Mr. Morgan, great to meet you. Some great thoughts and ideas you have. Thank you for sharing them with us. I'm sure we'll be hearing lots more from you. Young ladies, Ada and Vida, you know what? Mr. Ferguson was, was incorrect. The principal there has been there for 22 years, or not there. He's been in the district for 22 years, and he should know better. He should know the amount of work that we put into writing that policy on, on dress code, and I don't know the behind-the-scenes story with it, and I'm sure, you know, he was doing what he thought was best at the time, at that moment, but we'll give him the benefit of the doubt, and hopefully that Dr. Pramo will get behind this and make sure that the policy that was written and voted on and that you signed the agreement to will be in, I don't want to say enforced, but focused and continued with. So, thank you for coming out and speaking, and I totally understood Dr. Hill's comments about joining the speech and debate team. It wasn't about necessarily the, what you were talking about, but your eloquence and your ability to speak was well done and, and greatly appreciated. Good job, ladies. Thank you very much for representing so well. And I think that's it. Thank you all for coming and speaking, and we'll continue on with the rest of the meeting. Yes, thank you. We actually have a public hearing, number 12, at approximately 7:30. Sort of works. So, Dr. Weisberg, I'm going to gavel in. You're welcome. Public hearing for item 12A is now open. Would anyone like to provide a public comment on 12A? We're waving at people as they're leaving. Thank you. All right, seeing no one, the public comment section is now closed again. And 12A, oh, that was the, yeah, thank you. We can move on to 13. New and/or unfinished business. 13A, adoption of Resolution 2 proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Burbank Unified School Districts a Hispanic Heritage Month?
Oh, Madam President.
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2 proclaiming September 15th through October 15th as Burbank Unified School Districts Hispanic Heritage Month.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Mr. Ferguson. Discussion, please. Anybody?
Happy to see this.
Yeah, it's a good thing.
Thank you, Dr. Weisberg.
Thank you. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero. Is it something you would like to read?
Sure.
Dr. Weisberg, thank you.
Resolution two proclaiming September 15th to October 15th, 2022, the Burbank Unified School Districts Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the state of California is home to over 3 million Hispanic students from kindergarten through grade 12. And whereas the diversity of this group includes persons who have their origin in Mexico, Central and South America, Europe, Africa, and the Spanish-speaking Caribbean Islands. And whereas since the inception of European contact with our continent, Hispanics have always been an integral part of the nation's early exploration and California's discovery and early settlement. And whereas while the impact of the Hispanic culture and traditions are manifested in our state's customs, traditions, and laws, and whereas Hispanic Americans continue to make important contributions to our society in American government, business, agriculture, commerce, armed forces, education, the arts, science, and sports. And whereas the history, social science framework for California public schools, kindergarten through 12 states, the history curriculum of the community, state, religion, nation, and the world must reflect the experiences of men and women of different racial, religious, and ethnic groups and must be integrated at every level. And now be it resolved that the Burbank Unified School District Board of Education proclaims the month of September as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages all schools in the Burbank Unified School District to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities. You're quite welcome.
Okay. It seems kind of, well, I was gonna say just to moving on, but the next one is very exciting as well. 13B, adoption of resolution three proclaiming the month of September 2022 as PTA membership month.
Madam President.
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education adopt resolution three proclaiming the month of September 2022 as PTA membership month as presented.
Second.
Thank you and thank you for the second. We have tonight with us Charlene Walters and Kelly Dunkel, who, okay, she's staying. So we just have Charlene Walters.
I'm gonna take you out of my speech, Kelly.
Should we do that?
Your call, your call.
Oh, should I?
No, you stay right there. We're just, we're just, should we vote first or should we hear you out first?
I get it.
Let's take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries September 2022 as PTA membership month.
Yay!
Yes.
I have to say, I was very intimidated being here with the speech and debate team because this is like something I'm not very good at, but it was, it was motivational. So good evening, President Tabet, board members, Dr. Hill, BOST staff, and our attendees. This is Kelly Dunkel. And I'm Charlene Walters, Burbank Council PTA's first VP of Leadership. And I'm here to, on behalf of Burbank Council PTA's President Lori Little and our fellow executive members to talk about PTA membership. Thank you for designating the month of September as PTA membership month. Our mission is to positively impact the lives of children and families. PTA is part of the fabric of the United States' public education system and a trusted partner to parents, families, educators, community members, and its advocates for education, welfare, health, safety for all children. PTA has been instrumental in establishing programs and services to improve children's lives. Having a robust membership helps PTA achieve its goals. If you're not a part of PTA, I recommend that you become one. And so actually have these little QR codes.
For you to use. We did it. I did it.
Thank you. Membership is open to everyone without discrimination. There is no limit to the number of PTAs that you can join and support. So we have our community membership and I've handed out our QR codes to you to use. Burbank Unified School District has 16 units. If you join all, that's $135 for community members. So far, we have 11 community members. Does that include you?
Yes.
Oh, yay! Be a part of a powerful association that advocates on behalf of children at local, state, and national levels. Please visit burbancouncilpta.org and you can sign up, Community of Burbank. Thank you. All right. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for coming and staying.
Um, I have chips to put to sleep.
No, now, no, and staying up until now. I don't mean to stay like, you could stay till the end of the meeting. No, I didn't mean that. I meant for staying up until this point. Thank you.
It was good. It was interesting.
It was a good meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Read the resolution?
Sure.
I did pay my, I did pay my dues too.
Awesome.
Resolution number three proclaiming the month of September 2022 as PTA membership month, whereas Burbank Council PTA consisting of 16-unit PTA associations has a long tradition of seeking the highest possible education advantages for all children and youth so that they can realize their full potential. And whereas Burbank Council PTA assists parents in developing the skills they need to raise and protect their children, encourages parent and public involvement in public schools in our community, and speaks on behalf of children and schools in the community, in organizations, and before public governing bodies. And whereas during the month of September, special activities will be held to promote parent involvement, expand the membership of Burbank Council PTA, and broaden the PTA's base of support so it becomes a stronger and more effective voice for children and education. And whereas it is the role of Burbank Council PTA to encourage parent involvement by promoting an educational environment in which parents are valued as primary influences in their children's lives and essential partners in their children's education and development. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Burbank Unified School District certifies the month of September 2022 as PTA membership month in Burbank, California, and encourages our citizens to expand their involvement in issues affecting the education, health, and safety of our children.
Lovely. Thank you. Thank you very much. 13C, acceptance of the Burbank Teachers Association, CTA NEA, 2022-2023, proposal for bargaining and amendment to the current agreement with the Burbank Unified School District.
President Tabet.
Yes, sir.
I'll move that the Board of Education accept the Burbank Teachers Association, CTA NEA, initial proposal for bargaining and amendment to the current agreement with the Burbank Unified School District as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second, Dr. Agarconian, I think I heard first. I apologize if I missed that. Any discussion? Great. Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. 13D, approval of the district's initial proposal for the 2022-2023 amendment to the current collective bargaining agreement with the Burbank Teachers Association.
President Tabet.
Yes, sir.
I'll move the Board of Education approve the district's initial proposal for the 2022-2023 amendment to the current collective bargaining agreement with the Burbank Teachers Association as presented.
Thank you and thank you for the second, Dr. Agarconian this time, for sure. All those, oh, any discussion here? Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Motion carries five zero. 13E, approval of agreement for the diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we approve the agreement for the diversity, equity, and inclusion consultant.
Second.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, sorry. Uh, not to exceed $20,000 effective September 1st, 2022 through May 31st, 2023 as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. You need to read all those numbers too. I'm just kidding.
Don't tease me, please.
I know, that was terrible. All right. Any discussion here?
I just want to say that I'm really excited about it. I don't know if people had a chance to review the proposal, but I could not be more excited about the direction that we're going. I think it's going to provide our teachers with really practical, important tools that they can use in the classroom regarding trauma-informed education. So I, I'm just over the moon about Ms. Williams and her expertise and what she's going to be bringing to our faculty. And I, you know, I think this is an exciting year. Ms. Williams, along with our teacher leaders, I'm very hopeful and excited and optimistic about the capacity building and the expansion of DEI. So I want to thank Dr. Hill, Ms. Casio, and Dr. Paramo for, I know, looking around quite a bit to find somebody who is really going to meet the needs that our teachers and admin have expressed.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. 13F, acceptance of gifts.
Madam President.
I count on you. Okay. How are you?
I move that the Board of Education take formal action accepting the following gifts to the district and that the Board President convey appreciation to the donors as presented.
Second.
In the flourish that Mr. Ferguson usually does, sorry.
You'll never do the flourish.
You're absolutely right.
Thank you for the flourishless motion. Thank you.
It's our style.
Yes.
Did I get a second?
I second.
Second, sorry.
Whoever second.
Emily.
Okay. Dr. Weisberg, thank you with much flourish. Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So now, thank you so much to our donors. It's greatly appreciated all that we receive from everyone for everything that they do. Our first is Pinch 2022 Series S1 Warner Brothers Television, who wishes to donate to the district $6,000 to be used as needed at Dolores Huerta Middle School. And second, Biscuit Film Works LLC wishes to donate to the district $1,000 to be used as needed at Dolores Huerta Middle School. And those are our gifts for this evening. Thank you to the donors. Greatly, greatly appreciated. Now moves us to consent agenda.
President Tabet.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ferguson.
I will move we, the Board approve items 14A through 14R of the consent calendar unless there are items which Board members wish to poll.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Any items that need to be polled, Board members?
None.
Okay. Then all those in favor of approving consent agenda, A, 14A through...
R.
14R. Thank you, gentlemen. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was with some flourish, Mr. Fritter. I like that.
Anyone opposed, please say no. Great. Consent agenda is, motion carries to approve the consent agenda. Great.
Can I, can I make a request?
Yes, sir.
That instead of, instead of adjourning in memory, that we instead adjourn in celebration of Ms. Kukta's long tenure of service to the Board and to the Burbank Unified School District.
Yes, yes, yes.
Perfectly said.
Before you do that, I would like to...
This is the end?
No, before you get out.
Okay, go.
Two things. I did say I would adjourn again. I also wanted to remind everyone that August 31st was the International Overdose Awareness Day. It's important that we remember the loved ones we've lost and acknowledging grief. This is a big issue, especially because of the microphones.
Sorry. I just want to remind everyone that August 31st is, the people all around the world celebrated the 22nd International Overdose Awareness Day. The day is about remembering the loved ones we have lost, acknowledging the grief, and all the friends we've lost. This is a, you know, an epidemic. I'm certain that some of you have been reading about all the overdoses that have been happening in Burbank, some of our... Anyways, I think it is important that people are aware of this and this is an issue we start really talking about because the fentanyl and these overdoses are really devastating our communities. So again, August 31st, everyone, just remember it was the International Overdose Awareness Day. So Ms. Kukta, I do, I did want to keep my comments to the end. I apologize, maybe I didn't go early, but I just want to thank you. I know you're not going anywhere. But important, more important also, as my colleague said, you know, when I was first running, also one of the first people I met, we, you know, talking about the district, talking about the, you know, the issues, but also, you know, kind of coming from like-minded areas when it comes to business, understanding how, you know, things work. But I want to thank you for all your services. I'm going to miss you. But I know you're not going anywhere. But also I think it's important that people understand that when you have all these people coming and talking about you, it's something that you've worked so hard for, the admiration level, the understanding of how important it is and the sacrifices you've made for our children. I will always remember that and it's something I will keep in my heart. So, thank you very much for your service. And, and we're going to miss you. Thank you.
Do you want to say your part again or are we good to... Okay. Meeting adjourned in celebration of your time spent with us here Burbank Unified. Thank you. Gentlemen.